Good evening and welcome to the 31st meeting of fiscal year 2024 for the Milton Planning Board. At this time, I'd like to now call the meeting to order and begin by introducing the members of the board. If you'd like to introduce yourself, Maggie.
Maggie Oldfield, member.
Jim.
Jim Davis, member.
Cheryl.
Cheryl Tagaya, secretary.
Sean.
Sean Fahy, member.
And myself, Meredith Hall, serving as chair. And this evening, our staff, Tim.
Tim Zierwinski, Director of Planning and Community Development.
And Julia.
Julia Getman, clerk.
Great, thank you all. And we also have Sean Riordan, who is our peer review consultant, joining us this evening.
Good evening, everybody.
Great, thank you, Sean. So the first item on the agenda is approval of minutes. Cheryl did send out a set from March 28, which was a revised set of edits, and I just haven't had a chance to review those yet, so if we could make a motion to defer those.
Meredith, we also have the 14th, which were sent last week. Did everyone get a chance to look at those?
Yeah.
I haven't, I'm okay with them.
I'm fine with the 14th.
I'm fine with the 14th.
Me too. Good on the 14th, but I need another week on the more current meeting minutes.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the March 14 meeting minutes as amended.
A second.
Okay, all in favor, Cheryl?
Hi.
Jim?
Aye.
Sean?
Aye.
Maggie?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Great. And then we will defer the vote on the minutes for the March 28. Now, discussion of the next meeting dates. Julia has kindly reserved a room on May 6 for an organizational meeting. Is that at 7:00 PM, Julia?
I haven't, I think Lynn did it, so she takes the credit for that, but I think it's probably, it's usually 6:30 or maybe 7 o'clock because the town meeting starts at 7:30, so it's usually 7 o'clock.
Seven, that's what I thought, so.
But it can be any time, really.
Okay, does anyone have a preference? Probably because I think it will just, you know, based on the election organizational discussion for the board. So is 7:00 PM sufficient for everyone? Since we really don't have anything on there, okay. Okay, so the next meeting that will be posted is May 6 at 7:00 PM. And then that will be followed by a May 9 meeting and a May 23, our regular scheduled meetings.
Meredith, just in terms of the 6th, we have town meeting on the 6th as well, right?
Yes, so that would just be a pre-town meeting meeting.
I understand, okay.
So will, Tim and Julia, if you can just send out the location of that room confirmed with Lynn and just send that out to the board.
Sure.
Everyone knows where to meet, great. So the next, so those were the meeting dates. And then, Tim, we just have Director of Planning and Community Development update.
Thanks, Meredith. So I had sent out something a little bit earlier, something that the town administrator has been kind of cooking up regarding some economic development planning that his office is looking to spearhead. We, I forget if it was this most recent fiscal year or the previous fiscal year, we'd gotten an earmark in the state budget for general economic development activities, you know, which could kind of run the gamut from anything you can imagine. And I think after kind of a lot of deliberation, you know, the town administrator, you know, decided that we've done a lot of housing planning via, obviously, our housing production plan from a few years ago, and then, obviously, the MBT communities effort. There's been a lot of discussion around housing and zoning around that sort of thing. A little bit less attention on kind of the town's economic development policy. And so this is something that MAPC has done in other towns. Marshfield was a really good example of an economic development plan that they've done recently. Just really starting to think about, you know, again, we're in town meeting season. You know, we're all having discussions about the budget, you know, whether or not we're going to have an override, whether it's last year, this year, or next year. And so, you know, the idea of, you know, what policies do we have to, you know, raise revenue and kind of foster a more robust and vibrant kind of, you know, commercial economy in the town. And so, you know, we solicited MAPC for a proposal, something that the select board is interested in, you know, they approved the proposal from MAPC at their meeting last week. There is a, you know, just in terms of, you know, and having done these plans, you know, yourselves and having seen them in action, you know, the consultants like to have a kind of a public body to be checking in with and kind of direct activities. The select board is, as far as I know, kind of agnostic on that. You know, in terms of, you know, which is the public board. Ultimately, you know, they'll want to kind of, you know, have a role in it in terms of a final, you know, approval. But, you know, the notion was similar to some other initiatives that we've done, you know, the bike plan was an example. You know, in terms of things that have an overlap between select board and planning board kind of interests, you know, whether, you know, the Master Plan Implementation Committee would be kind of able to kind of slot into that role, given, you know, both their kind of, you know, dual nature and also the planning board's, you know, full plate with MBT communities, you know, which we're still working on. So that was something that, you know, this meeting was kind of a slot-in meeting. You know, this is something that I wanted to kind of get on the agenda for next week to just talk a little bit more, give you all some time to take a look at that proposal, see what your interest is in terms of, you know, your involvement. You know, whether that's something that, you know, you'd be comfortable with MPIC picking up, whether you want to kind of propose, you know, a greater role for the planning board. It's really something that, again, this is initiative that the Town Administrator's Office is spearheading, but also, you know, we want to make sure that, you know, there's buy-in from everybody and that it's something that, you know, we're using all of the resources in town to kind of, you know, spread the word and get people involved. So I know I sent that out, you know, just today, you might have had a chance, a good chance to look at it, but, you know, assuming, excuse me, assuming it's all right with the chair, you know, whoever the chair is, you know, and you're saying we have a reorganization. You know, we'd like to talk about it in just a little bit more detail next week and just kind of see, you know, what the board's temperature is on their involvement. But it's something that is kind of explicitly non-housing oriented. I think, you know, we kind of, we've been having that debate for a long time, we're going to continue to have it as we work through MBT communities, but wanted to talk through, you know, what are some other things that we can do to kind of, again, kind of create a more vibrant kind of commercial economy and expand the commercial tax base, which I think is something that everyone tends to be interested in, especially this time of year. So that's that. Cheryl, looks like she has a hand up.
Yeah, because I, that is a question that I had, that I know it's on the agenda for NPIC on the 1st, I believe. And it was disappointing to know that it was going directly to NPIC prior to going to the planning board. And that was, it's not on our agenda, it should be, it should be on the May 9 agenda, but Cheryl, I'll let you go ahead and speak to this, please.
Yes, well, it was an item that we were asked to put on the agenda. We have an upcoming meeting next week. So we can defer it if you prefer, if the board prefers to defer until after our board discusses. Our meeting is intended to be fairly short this week. We have another meeting coming up on May 13.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
Yeah, we can certainly do that. And this isn't, you know, the, if you take a look at the proposal, which, again, you know, went out today, I don't expect people to have read it. But there's a sort of a TBD, you know, a to-be-determined in terms of, you know, who's going to be the public board that, you know, hosts the kickoff meeting and gets kind of these periodic updates. So like I said, this is something that the select board has been, again, kind of doesn't have super strong feelings on. So this isn't like, you know, let's, I don't think anyone's trying to shut out the planning board, it's just, you know, NPIC had a meeting coming up, and then there's another agenda the next week for the planning board. You know, it'll be up to the select board to decide, again, like, they didn't express any strong feelings about it. If the planning board, you know, wants to have some measure of involvement, you know, you're certainly, it's certainly your prerogative to, you know, to talk to the select board about that and to kind of make the pitch. You know, and I think that, you know, if that's something the board's interested in, I'm sure that's something that, you know, we can, you know, put that into the proposal, you know, get that into the final language for the contract and kind of, you know, figure out an organizational kind of procedure for that. So it really is just kind of a timing thing. I apologize if there's any kind of, you know, anything about that, but, you know, just again, if you look at the proposal, you'll see, you know, it's a relatively small part of the proposal, and it is intentionally left, you know, up in the air so that we could have a little bit of time to figure out, you know, who wants to kind of carry the ball on this one.
Yeah, so I had, I did read through it today, and I sort of did have a couple thoughts. I did think that this was sort of in the lane of the planning board. And I kind of was a little surprised to see that it was going to NPIC. And I thought it was interesting that NPIC was sort of going to take the role because this is a really big initiative, and NPIC is an appointed body, it's not an elected body. So I just, you know, thought that this was kind of giving NPIC a little bit too much power. So I think it really should stay with the planning board first, and then, of course, you know, work alongside the select board, you know, whenever it's necessary. So I, like, my pitch would be for it to stay with the planning board first.
Yeah, and I think, Maggie, it's a well-taken point. I just want to be clear, I mean, you know, the agenda item, you know, that we, that I had asked Cheryl to put on for her meeting for NPIC, you know, this week was, you know, we're not having an informal meeting right now, this is just a staff update, but basically, the pitch, like, you know, here's a plan, you know, we, you know, the town administrator's office has kind of solicited this proposal. You know, we think that there's a role potentially for NPIC here. I think there's also a role for the planning board. So it wasn't like we're giving this to NPIC, it's, here's something, let's talk about what we think the, you know, this particular committee's role could be. You know, I think we intend on having that same conversation with the planning board. So, you know, I think there's still time for that, you know, we'll get it on the agenda next week and have a little bit more of a robust conversation. Maggie, I'm glad you're such a voracious reader. But everyone, hopefully, will have a week to kind of digest the proposal.
I'm off on Mondays.
Oh, yeah, well, there you go.
But it just, like, maybe I, and also not to take over this conversation, but maybe I just also in the future need a refresher of what the Master Plan Implementation Committee actually, what their role is, because I assume just by the very nature of their name, they're the Master Plan Implementation Committee, and this is a whole new, they're not implementing anything at this point, it's actually creating. So that's why I was a little confused.
All right, yeah, we're gonna, well, it should be put on the agenda, and I think we could just plan for that. And Cheryl, I appreciate you allowing the planning board to meet and discuss this.
Meredith, I'm just going to have the, our committee can, I think, can just discuss it with no decision to be made. I do want to be clear for Maggie and for others who might be watching that they're, one of the main sections of the master plan is economic development, and it is something that the committee has had conversation about. So just as the committee has followed up with other initiatives that require follow-up, it is a potential, we haven't discussed yet, so I don't know if the interest of the committee is going to feel in the right fit either, but I do want to have the conversation because of the connection to the master plan.
Okay. Fair enough, that's great.
Okay, and then, one more very, very quick thing, just to kind of put it on your radar. The, we've been working with Northland Residential to figure out their final two affordable units for the Walcott Woods project. You may recall 54 units down at Walcott Woods, they're responsible for six offsite affordable units. We've gotten four so far at 292 Brushhill Road, 234 Fairbanks Road. They are in the process of looking at a two-family on Warren Ave that they think shows promise. That's something I think that the Affordable Housing Trust this week is going to discuss and take a vote on a recommendation. And then we would kind of go through the process of getting those, you know, rehabbed and sold and on our subsized housing inventory. And at that point, you know, that affordability requirement for Walcott Woods will be satisfied. Great success, you know, still not a done deal yet, but I think Northland's done a really good job of kind of chasing this down. They've taken that element of the special permit very seriously. And so they've been, they've been a good partner in that. So fingers crossed that everything works out, but we're on a good track with that, and we can put that element of the special permit to bed.
That's great, perfect. Yes. Thank you for that update. And now we can move to our citizens speak. For those of you who would like to speak. And we do want to try to limit the amount of time so we can begin going through sort of where we are in the special permit, but certainly, welcome to those who'd like to speak tonight.
I'm not seeing any hands so far.
And there will be opportunity during the public hearing to speak, so. With that, we can open the public hearing to 111 Highland Street, special permit continued from April 24, 2024. And we can welcome Ned and his team.
I've found a space in the lunchroom at Town Hall.
Oh, good.
Having thought that the meeting was going to be a combination of live and memorex. So I trust that the reception here is good enough to participate completely. Could you please let Jesse Alderman, Blaine Buck, Paul Avery, and others, Sashi Meisner, Rebecca, Dylan, in as panelists?
If all those folks could raise their hands, that puts you up to the top of the.
Anyone else on our team who I may have neglected to name?
Great, and sorry we didn't get a reminder out to, matter of fact, a couple of meetings ago, Sean and I went to Town Hall and it was on Zoom, so it happens to all of us.
The public service announcements, just always check the agenda, but apologies, I don't think we were certain we would be able to get a room or not. So that wasn't something we were able to kind of pin down at the meeting last week.
No harm, no foul, we're here.
Right. And Ned, while everyone's coming in, I thought we could start by going through the amendments that you, the updates that you've made since we last met, would that be an appropriate way to start out going through the red line version? Yes, of the changes.
Tim, if you can share the screen, pull it up.
Yep.
Give me half a second here, sorry. Ned, is this NC2 is the most recent one?
Yes.
My folks seen that?
Yes.
Ned, had you accepted all of the red line changes from last week?
I had, there are very few additional changes, mostly sort of here, correcting your title at the top.
Is this something we can, we can go ahead and just accept, folks?
Just shoot down to number 14 real quick.
All the way down to 14?
Well, yeah, let's go through, let's go through each red line.
Oh, I'm sorry, no, that's fine.
So, planning and community development, that's good.
We go to the next one. Got final site plan?
Yeah, I added final in a couple of locations to make it consistent throughout the document.
I'm going to accept these two.
How does the board, the board, I'm fine with that.
Yes.
This is another final site plan.
Can we clarify what that means on 13? I just want to make sure I'm reading that properly. What does that change in the rear parking areas that are?
This is, this is a change, it's a change that should not have yet have been accepted, it should still read 18 feet. This is a lingering issue. We did a little bit of research. The question was whether we should have 14-foot-tall light poles in the rear parking areas, which would require four poles or two 18-foot poles. We had, we had left it at 18, having adjusted the rest of the light poles to 14, but that was a, that was a question that remained after last, last meeting. And, you know, the pleasure of the board is really what's appropriate here.
Are you saying that the option in that rear parking area is four poles at 14 feet in height or two poles at 18 feet?
Yes. Yeah, we're being told by our lighting consultant that 14 poles, the 14-foot poles won't be, two 14-foot poles won't be sufficient to cover the parking area.
How does the board feel about that? Is there a preference?
I will state my preference of four 14-feet poles. I think the the fact that you'd have these higher, I think, will potentially draw attention to them. And we also have, as we talked about, wintertime conditions where you see potential to see the winter valley fixtures just beyond this. You know, the reason that you need less is because the higher they go, you know, they can distribute further. And so you're going to have it basically in your view plane a little higher and brighter where they're starting. So when you have four, they're not going to have to be as bright because they don't have to distribute quite as far. So I just think it'll be a better even distribution of lighting as well.
I agree with Cheryl for the same reasons. Light's better distributed with the four poles at 14 than it would be with two at 18. I also like the consistency of 14-foot poles throughout the site. You know, I just, I think aesthetically, it's, it's it's better to maintain 14. So I agree with Cheryl, four at 14 would be preferable for me.
I'm on board with that as well. I think 18 is just really tall.
Me too, I like the consistency of it.
And I would agree.
Right.
So we'll just, we'll reject this because this is a change from 14 to 18.
Yep, and it'll go back to 14.
And the plan shows them for 14-foot, or it will show them.
That's right. And then the next change is, just for consistency, most of the language is shallow as opposed to will, just made that change to be consistent.
That's good.
The next change is a modification to language that was in the prior version that the hospital requested to be incorporated. It's substantially the same requirement that the hospital, we'll cooperate with the hospital to come up with a plan to assure appropriate management of commercial deliveries and that they're consistent with our plans and that they will meet, we will meet with the traffic commission and the hospital as necessary to ensure that any recommendations of the traffic commission makes the select board are consistent with the hospital's plans to manage commercial deliveries and traffic and the commercial delivery conditions of these permits.
Yeah, that's fine. The part that I had a problem with has been stricken, so it's okay with me.
I'm fine with this revision.
As I am.
Ned, is there more? I understand this is the condition. Is there more to speak to what the hospital's other intentions are?
Yes, they've given me some bullets to present to the board based on some of the act, the work that we'll do in the development of that plan. So with respect to the management actions, the hospital will be taking to ensure vendors use their road entry/exit and minimize use of ladder streets to or from the hospital. One, they will develop an addendum to commercial delivery contracts for every entry/exit and route to the hospital with an emphasis to avoid the ladder streets, similar to the condition that we've agreed to in this permit. Communication Operations Management Plan, the commercial delivery operation drivers to reinforce the importance of this condition and of this plan and periodic monitoring of compliance with the plan. A direct communication channel with neighbors in the town to alert hospital of any infractions, including photographs and complaints for ongoing management and adherence to the policy and the plan. The hospital's open considering other suggestions from the traffic commission and neighbors, and the hospital is willing to collaborate with neighbors on the ladder streets to address with town committees the cut-through issues that exist and exist. So those are five sort of action items that would be incorporated into the plan that would be developed.
So although that, that series of commitments cannot be made part of the condition, I was hopeful that that would be at least made record, you know, as part of the meeting, even though it's not part of the conditions, and I.
I can, I can email that to Tim this evening so that that's included in the record, there's no problem with that.
Okay, that's great.
Could it be added as an exhibit?
No.
No.
So it will be added as an addendum, did you say, Ned?
She asked whether it would be added, we could add this as an exhibit to the permit, I don't think we can do that, I don't have concurrence with the hospital with respect to them.
So, so basically, it doesn't have any teeth to it. I mean, it's part of the discussion, and I understand that and appreciate that, and we've had a lot of things, you know, part of a discussion. But I just, I mean, it's nice to put in, but I don't think it has any teeth to it.
But maybe it can lay down a basis for the hospitals trying to make efforts to keep traffic off the ladder streets. And if and when they come before the town for something else, maybe we can go back to it and say, hey, you said you would do this and you're doing a great job and the traffic on the ladder streets has improved and that's great. Or we can say, look, you, you know, you're trying to make concessions to alleviate traffic and you've done nothing.
Yeah. Yeah, here's, I guess here's my point of view on it. We're accomplishing as much as we can accomplish with the language that we will have as part of this condition. And the hospital offered those five actions that they intend to take. It is, it is, the hospital, it's upon them to execute on that. You're right, Maggie. There is no teeth, but there is their standing within the community that I think would motivate Rich, you know, to follow through. He has, he has excellent intentions with what he has outlined. And it's his responsibility as the leader of the hospital to follow through. All the folks that are listening tonight, and I think there were forty-four participants, will understand it's going to be a matter of record and we are going to entrust the hospital that they are sincere and that although there's no mechanism to have so-called teeth, that they'll follow through. And I have confidence that Rich will.
And can we be sure that, that those five actions get into our minutes at least? So they're documented somewhere?
That's all I was suggesting is that it's somehow included in the record of the meeting, that this is the commitment that the hospital made. It's not part of the condition, but it's, yet it is a commitment.
I've just emailed them to Tim.
Beautiful.
Great.
Best we can do, Maggie. You know, we can't, I don't think we can accomplish more than that.
I think with the funds that are being deposited in the traffic mitigation fund and the planning board's approval for use of those funds being required, that we could put a request in that those funds immediately be put to use and develop a traffic study scope of work, which includes working with the hospital and perhaps the, if the recommendation, what is in this condition, that they would work with the recommendations of the traffic commission, we could ask that they participate through the traffic commission in the, in that study. And then some recommendations could come out of that study. So I, my suggestion is that the board send a letter to the traffic commission with its interests in this follow-up and a recommendation for the use of the funds, then they'll have to come back to us. There's been no expenditure of the funds or any funds from that account yet, so we haven't established a process. But I think this would be a good first project to establish a process for that.
And I think we should also get input from the neighbors on how they would like to see those funds allocated. They may wish to have a speed humps, you know, installed using funds from that. So I just would like to get their input. But I think sending a, a letter from, from our board to the traffic commission would make sense. But I, based on getting some additional feedback on whether a traffic study would be most interesting or actual installation of traffic slowing, uh, speed humps.
Yeah, and I get all that. And but to Sean, to your point, like if BI was really concerned about its standing within our Milton community, then they wouldn't be threatening a forty B if this doesn't go through. So that's my biggest hang up here. So not to belabor a point, any additional language is great. But it is, I'm just still a little skeptical.
All right. Okay. So for now, go ahead, Tim?
I was gonna say, should I accept these changes?
Is the board willing to accept those?
Yeah, I'd say.
Yep.
I am.
This is just an internal reference change, it looks like?
That's correct.
Was that it?
That was it.
All right, any other questions? So I, and I, does anyone have any questions, I should say, before I discuss the, a proposed condition that I sent out today? Yeah, Tim, if, could you pull up what I, the language that I had emailed to you today?
Give me half a second. I just want to make sure.
Yeah, take your time.
Yeah, no, no, no. I, I had a little bit of a problem saving last time, so I want to make sure I'm being fastidious this time.
Yep, yep, absolutely.
I can.
No rush. Take your time.
It's not my share, though. Sorry. Okay, I have that in an email from you. So the, the email that you sent, Meredith, is the most recent?
Yeah.
One, let me pull that up. Now I'll share my screen again. All right, can we all see that?
Yes. Okay, so basically, you know, in my, in the, in the, all of this process, I have to say, you know, I just am very grateful to the changes that North Bridge has, has made and all of the improvements and just really moving this, moving through this language and making sure that the best project, that we have the best outcome possible. One of the things that, and I've mentioned it quite a bit, is, is my concern in just the process of how it came to the planning board after the Conservation Commission had already voted on it and then it came to us. And I believe the Conservation Commission was under, under the impression that hydrologist was going to be looking at this site. And when I had requested and the planning board requested a hydrologist, hydrogeologist, look at this project, we were told that the Conservation Commission was hiring a hydrogeologist. And then at the end, they found out that it was actually not a hydrogeologist. And I think they had already voted at that point. So this is simply language. And I believe Sean Reardon can, can talk to this. But essentially, just really making sure the language is, is as complete and tight just to protect the neighbors and just, just pinpointing and just putting in specific language on, is my understanding, is everything that this project has already, has stated that they would do, that North Bridge has, has said that they are, they are committed to doing. So this is, this is not different from what they've said. This is just language to give teeth to that and make sure that we, as a planning board, have done everything that we can do to protect the neighbors and not have any significant adverse effects to the wetlands and to the vernal pools in, in the neighborhood. But, but specific to this site, that the water will be properly controlled. So I don't know if we, if folks had a chance to just review this, if we want to, you know, talk about it for a minute. And I'd love to hear from, you know, Sean Reardon as well, because I, you know, this is just language, again, subject to, you know, if we are going to approve this, I think we need to make sure that we have done everything that we can to just safeguard and protect, protect the neighbors.
Well, I'll defer to Sean for the moment, but the fundamental here is that you're asking us to consider complying with standards that don't exist. That they're based on a current proposed draft of regulatory amendments to the stormwater standards. Those standards don't exist. It would be illegal to impose these standards on this, on us. And what I think you should be doing is relying upon the process that DEP is engaged with, which is a complete review of the stormwater system and the design associated with this property. And then we're going to be bound by it. Same as a superior court process.
Okay, all right, let's, Sean, yeah, I would like Sean Reardon to speak to this, please.
Yeah, my, my biggest concern is sort of potential conflicts, right? So if DEP does come back with something specific and their, in their decisions, they're going to be based on current stormwater standards. You know, I would hate DEP's decision and your decision to somehow be in conflict. I'm not, not saying that they will be, but you know, most of the stuff that I see here is duplicative of current standards. But my, my biggest concern is that to the extent that something is in conflict with what DEP determines, it just creates sort of some, you know, unnecessary tension in something that really probably is not going to return any change in design. But, you know, it, it will create some sort of tension between the two processes.
So Sean, if we, if we took out the language which are derived from the Mass, the Mass DEP's current proposed draft language, your understanding is that these items are really, they currently exist, these protections?
Yeah, one of the ones that, that, that doesn't is the sixty percent, or the, I'm sorry, the phosphorus removal, yeah, the sixty percent phosphorus removal. So that, that's not in the current standards, but that's something that can only be done by infiltration. So there's some things in here that sort of require additional infiltration. And I know the neighborhood's been sort of concerned about groundwater and infiltration on the site. So, you know, that, that's something that, you know, might be inadvertent negative to these conditions. So I, I would certainly feel more comfortable staying with the stormwater standards that are currently on record just to avoid any potential conflicts. And also keep in mind too, the, the stormwater standards have very robust compliance terms. So, you know, it, it's very detailed demonstration of compliance. Whereas when we have a sort of a written condition like this, it lacks that, you know, the teeth of the compliance section that the stormwater standards have. So I'm just a little bit concerned about that as well.
Okay, but so again, one, one A, that, that seems fine to you, right?
That's a current requirement. Yep.
No.
No, it's not. If it's not cotton-pasted verbatim from the, from the current stormwater standards, this is preempted by state law.
There's a requirement in here that we'd have to do additional groundwater mounting analysis. That's not a current standard.
She was speaking to A only.
A, I was asking about A.
And here, here's the, so Meredith, the issue here is, right, it's like even if, to Jesse's point, even a change in wording could potentially be a conflict. So the standards are very clear in defining what has to happen in seventy-two hours. How much groundwater has to be infiltrated in the time you have to do it? So I'm, I'm just, from what I see, I see very little added benefit and a lot of added risk in terms of just complication. I think you can be confident that in complying with the current standards, all of the neighbors' concerns are going to be met. And I, I don't think anything here is, is going to be a sort of a substantive change to what you're going to end up getting in design.
Okay, I guess.
My, my fundamental question, Meredith, is why can't you rely on DEP to do its job?
Because what, what I, what I feel is lacking is that, in this condition, and even if it's the last line, through the submission of a report prepared by qualified scientific experts hydrologist, it's, it's really a hydrogeologist. It's, it's really the subsurface water and soil conditions, which to me have not been clearly fully, fully studied. So this, this would give, excuse me, please don't interrupt. What I'm looking for is protection for the neighborhood, that we make sure that, and there will not be any new testing done. There will not be necessarily to the extent of the studies, which, which I feel we're, we're lacking in this process. But I would defer, I would, so I'm, I guess I'm trying to find a way, and Sean, maybe you can help with this, that we can put some additional language in and that we have, that we do have a proper amounting analysis.
So just one quick thing, Meredith, I could. The stormwater standards are explicit. The only people qualified to certify a design compliance with the standards are licensed Massachusetts civil engineers. So, so requiring anybody else to do that would run contrary to, to the standards. And the reason for that is hydrology is, is yes, is part of a stormwater design, but it's, it's, it's probably twenty percent of a stormwater design. You know, there's a lot of other engineering principles that go into designing a fully compliant system. So I, so I would caution sort of substituting a hydrologist for a licensed civil engineer because there are so many other issues that affect a system design that are not necessarily encompassed in those disciplines. Just for the record, I spoke with Peter Dillon about this project, who is a hydrogeologist from our office and a very good one that I'm sure, you know, some of you folks know and has been, has worked for this EBA before. So, so you have, I have spoken to a hydrogeologist about this project. So, so it hasn't been sort of silent on that. But just, so we're clear, the standards are explicit. The people qualified to certify a stormwater design are civil engineers, not hydrologists or hydrogeologists.
So I'm wondering why the Conservation Commission had asked for that. That John had asked for that and then later found out that it was not a hydrogeologist. And I'm assuming that referring to underlying soils which shall be measured institute saturated hydraulic conductivity tests. I don't think that's been done. Or are you saying DEP will do that?
No, there are, there are standards within the, there are ways in the standards that, that this testing is, is supposed to be done and they did it that way. There, there are provisions within the standards to, based on institute testing, which they did, which are test bits. They have to do test bits in order to substantiate the underlying soil conditions, particularly in their infiltration systems. They did institute testing and there are provisions within the guidance documents that allow you, based on the results of that, to select from soil types that have certain hydrogeological and hydrological characteristics. So, so they did, they did do institute testing. They want, they aren't, this isn't blind. They do have guidance within the documents that allow them to draw the conclusions they have. We've, the applicants looked at the mounting analysis, we've looked at the mounting analysis, and I've given the board some background on how I reached my conclusions that I am a hundred percent confident the mounding will not impact the design of the system or will not break out of the wetland. So I, I think they've done everything they need to do. The reason the new draft standard has the requirement for doing this work is because it's not always required, as you guys heard earlier, because they have four feet of separation, the current standards don't require a mounting analysis. So, so to your point, you know, had, had they not been willing to do it, a condition like this would have been reasonable. But they, they did the analysis and we did the analysis. So, you know, that work has been done. So I feel they've complied with that. But, you know, the new standards eliminate that, that. But, you know, the new standards eliminate that 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 sort of that relief from having to do anything if you're more than four feet of separation. So in fact, if you're going to be using it for pre versus post, they want to make sure that you do do a groundwater analysis for that.
Right, thank you. So the mounting analysis that you're saying that you did accounted for the saturated hydraulic conductivity of the underlying soils?
Yes.
Okay. And then I guess number three, what would that does not seem to be in conflict with any of the standards. Do you do you see any conflict there? A number three.
I I don't see any conflicts. Where is the? Yeah, I I don't see any conflicts with this.
That would be acceptable. That would be acceptable to put that in.
Sure, I just I'm not that familiar with the thornth weight analysis. So I don't know how 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 demanding that is, but you know, a water budget typically is very we've done this with the Army Corps of Engineers. Typically, what they want to see is when you have a vernal pool, if you're modifying less than 25% of the area contributing to it, it's deemed to not have a measurable impact on it. So the Army Corps of Engineers and the federal folks have have pretty specific guidelines and simple guidelines for how you determine that, whether or not you're likely to impact the hydrology of a vernal pool. In this case, I'd say 95% or 90% of the site around those vernal pools is staying unchanged. So I wouldn't expect, under any circumstances, that hydrologic regime to be changed.
Okay.
But but if that were true, I suppose it would be easier to prove using this analysis. I just I just I'm not that familiar with.
So so I'm hearing that number three is something that's being done already.
I don't, they haven't submitted anything by the thornth weight method or equivalent method. So not specific to the water budget, largely because the situation doesn't appear to warrant.
Okay.
Typically, Meredith, that's like, for example.
Yeah. Meredith, if we were Sorry, finish, finish, Sean. Okay, can you?
When we were when we were designing Casino, right, we had we had these vernal pools all around it. And the issue became is we were modifying basically, you know, 80% of the area around the vernal pool. So we were having a very substantial, you know, impact on the the water that got to it. In this case, you know, the the project, even though it's a good sized project, the the vernal pool, it's really on like one side of the vernal pool, so it leaves the whole rest of the area pretty much unchanged.
Okay. Any questions from the the board members for Sean?
Meredith, I don't know if you're seeing like some of the hands that are raised. Jesse Alderman's had his hand raised, and there's been times that I've had mine.
Sorry, I'm not, yeah, I'm not seeing the hands. I apologize. Whoever has their hand up.
Yeah, I just raised that just because I think it's partly why you're hearing people kind of talking out of order, if you will. So I think if you click on the participants in your Zoom on the lower left, you'll be able to see better, maybe the hands.
No, it's covered. I think it's, oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah, so I just that might help.
And Tim, you can keep an eye open as well, if I miss.
So I did want to, now that I've got the floor, I hope, Meredith.
Yes, yes, please go ahead.
Sean sent us a an email where he replied to each of these points. I don't know if that's something we could have Tim put up on the screen. This is very, very detailed detailed condition that I have no expertise at all in being able to judge whether that's a good condition or not, whether it provides any protections or not, whether it's legal or not. So I feel as if I have to rely on our peer review engineers' recommendations to to this. So I just wanted to make sure everybody else who's watching can see what our peer review engineer's comments are here, in addition to what he's already provided verbally.
And thank you, Sean, for doing this. I have not seen these comments, so this is helpful.
Yeah, I'm just making sure I didn't say anything embarrassing.
Okay, no, I had not seen this, so I apologize. So, yeah, this is good to review this.
So Sean, would you be able to just run through it? I know you've spoken to some of it, but I think there there's some things here that are a little more specific than what you just outlined.
Yeah, so so these were just, I got these recommended conditions this afternoon and took a look at them real quick. So I just sort of jotted down my initial comments. And these are the ones that are in orange type. The first one was, again, I just a little uncomfortable referring to anything that is based on draft because it's subject to change and can create some awkward inconsistencies that really don't do anybody any favors. But again, if if the board decides that there's something that's really important to them that think is going to be, you know, substantive, then, you know, certainly support that. Recharge systems, that's, there's a current requirement that all infiltration systems need to drain within 72 hours. So that's that's in the current regulations. The other one was, you know, that to create an additional desire to infiltrate more runoff than is currently being done seemed sort of counterproductive to the dialogue that we've had to date, which is, you know, seemed to be centered around too much infiltration. So, you know, I wouldn't want to be doing anything that unnecessarily increases how much they're required to infiltrate beyond what the current standards call for. You know, a mounting analysis has been done. So the applicant did a mounting analysis. We did several to sort of approximate what the resulting mound would be from the stormwater system. And I did some initial analysis and demonstration for why, you know, I am 100% confident that it won't break out and that it won't enter into the system above it. Then the last comment was, again, what I said before, is that the mounting analysis that was done is based on information that was collected from institute testing, which is basically in the ground. They have to do a series of test pits in order to substantiate that the soil conditions are what they they expect them to be, that the groundwater elevations are what they expect them to be. And number two, my biggest concern was regarding the phosphorus removal. You know, Tetra Tech actually did write the phosphorus removal documents that the EPA uses in their assessment of phosphorus removal. So we know this pretty well. Really, the only way to increase phosphorus reduction is to increase infiltration. So, you know, that's why infiltration is usually pretty good is that it's it's one of the most effective ways of getting phosphorus out of runoff. So, you know, if 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 there's an additional requirement to remove phosphorus, it's it will mean more infiltration on site. And again, that seemed counterintuitive to what the the neighborhood was concerned about. And then the last was was my concern about just being clear on the standards specify who's qualified. And only Massachusetts civil engineers are qualified to certify stormwater designs.
Okay. All right. Any other questions from the board on this? And then we'll go to, I just looked, I did not see hands up, so please let me know if they're back up again. No questions from members of the board?
No, I'm good. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Cheryl, you've spoken. Sean or Jim?
Just the the language that Sean had marked up and read that we just saw there. Where did that where did that language come from? Who initiated that language that Sean then marked up?
That was language that I had that I had sought.
Okay.
Yeah, as as just a concern of offering something that might be just additional protective language for us.
I understand.
Yeah, I'm kind of with Cheryl, or I have to defer to Sean on this one. Sean Riordan. And go with what our peer reviewer says. And I do appreciate your response.
That you're requiring is probably your most effective means of ensuring that the the stormwater design is constructed the way it needs to be.
Sean, I'm sorry, could you repeat that? You faded out for me.
To Meredith's comment about just making sure there are added protections in for the neighbors and the bond requirement that I understand is part of this decision is is by far the most sort of forceful tool and one that is not hardly ever employed. So, you know, that's something that is is significant and will absolutely result in in, you know, demonstrated compliance from the applicant.
Thank you. I appreciate that. Okay. So are we, is anyone seeing any hands up? Anyone who would like to speak at this time? Okay. Oh. We do have Jesse Alderman.
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. And apologizing for some of the cross talk earlier.
All right, yeah, I didn't see.
No, Zoom is always, it's always like that on Zoom, you know. So thank you. I I don't want to, I don't want to replow the ground that that Mr. Riordan did. I think his, I think his technical expertise is very valuable here. But I, at risk of saying the same thing I've I've now said to you three times and written in three different memoranda, I really urge you to consult legal counsel on a condition like this. This is, you know, I don't want to be overly dramatic, but akin to the planning board saying, you know, what teachers can be hired or something like this, there's jurisdiction that exists. It is with the State Department of Environmental Protection and the stormwater standards in the absence of a more stringent local bylaw are preempt have preemptive effect. And I think all three of these conditions, certainly one and two, irreconcilably conflict with those current standards. Thank you for hearing me on that.
Yep, thank you. Okay.
Meredith, my one other question with respect to that is who reviews what would get done under these new standards? And who determines whether we're compliant or not? You don't have the capacity to do that. You should.
Yeah, we should have language in that.
Which has the capacity to do that.
Okay.
We're this this project, the stormwater components of this project have been appealed to two forums. One is DEP, the other is the Superior Court. You, we have a right to have you rely on the outcomes of those two appeals. That's more than enough protection.
Great, thank you. And I do appreciate and value all, everything that Sean Riordan has done for us. So that is not to say that this is not about that, so. Anyone else? Tim, are you seeing any hands up? Oh, you're muted, I think. Ned, sorry.
Sorry, I was speaking privately.
That's all right, you're muted, but your mouth is moving, so maybe there was something you wanted to add. Okay.
Not seeing any more hands.
No more hands, okay. All right. So there's no hands from the public.
I mean, we do have in in the attendees, I don't know if you want to start taking.
Attendees, yes. I think if there's nothing else from the board, I would want to go to the attendees.
We've got Fred McFadden.
Okay. Great, welcome, Fred.
Hi, thanks, Fred McFadden, 12 Spafford Road. Just wanted to make one quick comment regarding the conversation about the hospital's commitment to doing their best to work with their staff or employees in business vehicles. I just want to reiterate that at the beginning when this all started, Rich Fernandez was very helpful and came down to our street to visit with us, and I don't think anybody doubted that he was sincere. And it didn't work. He communicated it to the ambulance companies and put out flyers, and it didn't work. So I just wanted to reiterate that. Thank you.
Great, thank you, Fred. Who do we have next? Tim?
We've got Bard. I'll allow Bard to talk.
Okay. Bard, welcome. Are you?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Tim. This is Bard Iresi, 11 Spafford Road. You know, I appreciate the last discussion here along the impacts of the water. I think you've heard, you know, from a lot of us, we really appreciate the board's efforts to, you know, to look at that and help protect the neighborhood. I think one important distinction, you know, is, you know, regarding existing conditions here, we are, you know, we have such a high water, high groundwater table. And, you know, this idea of, you know, in order of magnitude of of increased water going into the ground, you know, is where a lot of this concern is coming from. And, you know, to our understanding, you know, there hasn't really been a lot of study on that. And, you know, so I appreciate you, Madam Chair, for bringing that up. You know, the, you know, you know, the Conservation Commission had said, oh, well, water flows downhill. You guys, Spafford and Highland are downhill from the site. But really, the the reality is the houses that are right along Highland are actually, you know, downhill from the top of Spafford, and their water pumps down towards the site, just as the upland where this building would be would go downhill. And so the wetlands will, you know, will likely change and grow and shift. And we know that these stormwater standards, you know, are decades old. They do not factor in the changes that we're seeing in heavy precipitation events. You know, over 50% increase in the last few decades in the Northeast is the greatest in the in the nation. That's forecast to continue to grow. So that's part of the reason, you know, you know, the the DEP is changing the standards. So I think, you know, we, what we know now is that, you know, the ground is going to get wetter, there's going to be more water. And if you if you make two acres of land in woodland surrounded by wetlands impermeable, and you sink part of that building up to 10 feet below the seasonal groundwater line, and, you know, are continuously draining water from around there and pumping that into the wetlands, that you're going to see impacts that, you know, with all due respect, you know, Mr. Riordan and Tetra Tech, you know, may technically be right on some of these points. But, you know, these are decades old standards. And the foundation pumping and draining and, you know, that that doesn't come into play. DP is not looking at any of that. So I think I think we are at risk here of oversimplifying and saying, well, the groundwater mounting analysis and the Hantush model is very simple. It doesn't tell us that much, but these stormwater standards are also kind of outdated. So, you know, from a planning perspective, I think, you know, it is appropriate to think, well, you know, what else should we think we'd be looking at and thinking about to make sure that what we know is coming, which are wetter years, intense storms? And now, you know, that's all been accelerated, and now we're sinking this huge building into the ground. We are building these retaining walls right up against these non disturbed zones. And we're going to be, you know, changing these wetlands. I think it's naive of us to think that there will be no underlying changes. And I think even Mr. Riordan acknowledged in his letter to Tetra Tech in August 2023 that there will be changes to the underlying hydrology. But then he goes on to say the the neighbors and their experts have not proven that any of those will be significant. So I have not, he may have done groundwater mounting analysis, but I have not seen it. I've seen the one from Paul Avery, which shows groundwater mounding and breakout. So does the one done by Scott Horsley. So, you know, I respectfully, you know, disagree on that point. So so, yeah, again, thank you so much for for considering these. These are important, not just for those of us on on Highland and Spafford, but all the way down to Wendell Park. You know, that vernal pool is, vernal pools in general are very sensitive to changes in waters, I've learned. So, you know, when we're talking about a lot more water going to the ground, we're talking about, you know, even if there's some, you know, 100 foot, or I'm not exactly sure how far that the driveway is, maybe 75, 100 feet. You know, there will be some changes. So, you know, something like doing a water budget, I don't believe is that onerous of a of a something to have to do to make sure that that vernal pool is protected and respected. But again, thank you for letting me speak at this, at this and all the other hearings and for making these points. You know, the water issue, you know, is 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 real. We have these highly compacted soils. The water sits, doesn't all runoff. And the houses that are right directly or close to this site are going to have, you know, some issues to deal with, you know, if this isn't designed properly. So thank you very much.
Great, thank you. And next, I'm seeing Gene Irwin's hand and then Manette. Gene.
Gene, you can unmute. Maybe we can go back to Gene.
Okay. Gene? Manette, you are muted. Showing Gene isn't.
Good afternoon, good evening.
Evening, welcome.
Yep. Thank you all. Manette Donovan, 16 Spafford Road. I'm here before you this evening to request that you vote no. And I believe all of the facts in this record demand that you do so. What is before us is a matter which opened frankly, a big can of worms. As a board, you did what this process is designed to do, allowed us to comment, and albeit late, we were, got involved and the neighbors really became aware of what's going on here and how it will impact our neighborhood. And the applicant, rather than thoughtfully addressing these as a good neighbor would, has elected to demand a vote. Essentially removing the neighbors from the equation. This takes away the opportunity, as changes are requested, for us to say, yes, we think that will work, no, we don't, and here's why. I really believe that this amounts to an abusive process. We've indicated that we want more specific water studies and showed the impact on our neighborhood. And the result is, well, you're at the DEP now, you're under appeal, let's wait and see what they say. We should be working together on this, that's what this process is for. The traffic, same thing there, we want to do a study afterwards, we need to do that now. Last week, we were talking about mitigation of the construction and we're saying, should we start at seven, should we start at eight, should we start at nine? You know how we'll know? We'll get a traffic study that shows exactly how many cars go by there. Because I was at that intersection between Spafford and Highland this morning at 8:00 AM, and there were three cars waiting the stop sign. Unfortunately, I didn't have my phone and I don't think you have time for a, one of my shows this evening. But I don't, I think it really requires more time than that. We're going to be with this forever, years of construction, and then this site is here indefinitely, it's going to outlast all of us. So the reasons for the no vote, number one, traffic, it's undisputed that we have an inordinate amount of traffic. We don't have, this is one of the oldest roads in town, about 20 feet wide, no sidewalks. The cars are going to come. The greatest predictor of future behavior is past behavior. The hospital has tried to work with us, it doesn't work, they don't have control over their vendors, no matter what the vendors sign. And I applaud you for trying to think outside the box, we're going to put, but I think, you know, it's putting the fox in charge of the chicken coop. The owner of the site is going to keep a camera and if someone takes a right, we're going to then, I guess, I can't get the footage to the town and the town will pay $250 to someone on Spafford Road. I can't quite figure out exactly how it's going to work, but I, I'm guessing that's probably not in the lot, I'm guessing that individual from the town probably has a lot of other things to do in their job description. And it's putting the fox in charge of the chicken coop, or the neighbors will call, such as we did for a long time with the hospital, and it just frankly does not work. The only thing that I can see would be making Spafford Road a dead end, completely blocking traffic. That's the only way I see this working out. It's too narrow for sidewalks, it's too narrow, even when traffic goes one way up the street during a certain time of day, even with speed bumps, it's a very narrow road. And so we all acknowledge we need a traffic study here, it should be done in advance, not after, because it's too late for us then, we don't have a voice then. Once this is gone, they're saying no now, and they're at their kind of, at the time they would be most willing to negotiate. And we're hearing so many no's. So we're, we're lost after, after your vote, frankly. As far as the water goes, this, the response is, this is with the DEP. You don't know what, we don't know what they're going to come back with, they're right. So let's wait and see. It's unfortunate that we couldn't get to the table then, we asked for additional time there before the Conservation Commission, and it was not provided, a vote was taken, and now that's where we are. We should not go down that road with the planning board. Our experts are not confident that the standards are met with regard to water. If the issue isn't fully studied and the applicant's demanding to close the hearing, that leaves you with no choice but to vote no. Issue number three, it's a scenic road in neighborhood. So we designated this a scenic road. You must look at the environmental values, the historical values, the scenic and aesthetic characteristics, and the public safety, none of those are met here. We're putting in a development that's one and a half times the fruit center, five times the hospice, 16-foot retaining walls, that is not in the character of this neighborhood. I have asked on multiple occasions for what the site will look like when you drive to the top of Spafford Road. I showed a piece of paper at the meeting very late in the evening a couple of weeks ago, and Sean was right, it was to the left of the Bacardi's driveway, but to the right of the Bacardi's driveway is virtually the same. It's a big wet mounded area where evergreens just aren't going to grow. So we're going to drive up and that's where the site is closest. So maybe there's a reason I haven't been able to get that drawing of what it's going to look like from there, but that should certainly be seen before there was a vote. Next, there's a vast number of changes, we keep getting these new redlined versions and everyone discussed, and this is not our area of expertise. If the applicant wants to close the hearing, fine, but don't provide, give vote before the neighbors have the opportunity to provide meaningful doc, meaningful comment on every single page of this document. What is the rush? Why are we providing this developer with so many exceptions? We've got fire code violations, kids are walking to school there, we've got the fire truck going multiple times a day on occasion, delivery trucks. I have a note here from a prior meeting, you know, we have one note from the, the developer indicating, this is how many trucks we say go there. We'd like more evidence of how many trucks, I've specifically requested that, are going to go back and forth. There's a lot of things that are outstanding, we should not rush this. This is going to be here forever. If you vote no this evening, you will send a message loud and clear that we will not be put into a corner. We're at the DEP now because they didn't want to work with us. It's not right to do it that way, and it's what this process is for. So I implore you to vote no this evening, or wait at the opportunity that there is a vote. Thank you.
Thank you, Manette. We possibly get Gene Erwin back? I think he'd wanted to speak. Gene, you can join us now if you'd like.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
I apologize, I was pressing the button, I don't know why, it wasn't going through. But regarding the hydrology, you know, we had a lot of these promises from the DEP, from Conservation, when Marine Road was going in, we were promised over and over, there wouldn't be any adverse effects. And Tusha Wells, I don't know if you saw the pictures recently, her backyard is completely flooded. I've been friends with the Wells for many years, and I've never seen the pooling in their backyard like I've seen before. I was talking to Teresa O'Brien today, she says, Gene, she said, my pumps don't stop running anymore. My own house, I had French drains put in, and my house was dry. And now recently, in the past year or so, I'm getting water again and I have to revisit those drains. Everyone's getting the water. And I said, the DEP and Conservation promised us, this isn't going to happen, and it happens. So that's just one issue. Prior to the meeting, I overheard Jim say, hey, you know, there's really nothing left to talk about. And I love Jim to pieces, then I have to disagree. Jim, I have, I'm going to have headlights coming in my room, my family room, and all my bedrooms at all hours of the day, you know, winter, it gets dark early. So I'll have the morning shift lighting up my house, I'll have the 11 o'clock shift lighting up my house, I'll have the four or five o'clock shift lighting up my house. I've tried planting arbovitae's out there, I've tried planting Japanese maples, I've tried planting dogwoods. Everything dies because the town salts the roads so much up here because of all the hills. And so nothing survives. The hospital, again, we haven't seen any plans on their parking stuff yet. I'm of the opinion that Meredith Hall is probably going to win this election, and that these meetings should continue until this stuff is vetted. As we all know, you know, walls are, you know, character defining of neighborhoods. And people like the Wells and Karen Bacardi's and Georgia Lee, they have all these amazing mansions on Highland Street. And we're going to offset that with about the cheapest, ugliest wall known to man, this Canigliero wall. And the Canigliero wall, by the way, I've been looking through the different manuals on the walls, and they say it's about the least safe as far as tipping over. The previous wall, the, which I didn't like either, the ready rock, at least it wasn't a tipping hazard because it was cantilevered, and it was just a whole different design. In Milton, you know, this is one of the only scenic roads that we're talking about, but we've crossed wetlands on Wentworth, off of Ford Ranch Road, we also did Stonebridge off of Woodland. These were off the beaten path roads, but the developers were able to put in real beautiful walls. And a decent wall to be safe, it needs to be reinforced concrete with metal. And Stonebridge Lane doesn't need any guide rails. And the guide rails, by the way, are the cheapest ones known to man, they're not recommended by anyone because they're not steel reinforced and they're subject to rotting from the road salts and everything else, they're not going to last long. And those guide rails are the only thing preventing cars and trucks from going off the road, or off the, you know, it's a cliff, and down into the wetlands. And even the guide rail, as you go into this project, is on the wrong side. We have a guide rail protecting a fence, instead of the guide rail protecting pedestrians on the right-hand side as you go in, the guide rail's behind the sidewalk instead of in front of the sidewalk. And so to me, this whole application is being rushed as it was rushed through Conservation. As I said, they didn't even have a quorum, they were rushing so fast and, you know, missed the mark. So I please either ask you to vote no, or give the neighbors more time so we can have this thing properly vetted. And, you know, even tonight, I'm racing because of this arbitrary deadline we have. And every single night, the neighbors, that there's a meeting, if they get to speak after 11 o'clock, you know, you have to stop because it's getting late. So the neighbors have, I agree with the last speaker, this has been a total abusive process from a neighborhood standpoint. And that's all I want to say. If you're going to vote tonight, by all means, but please vote no. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Gene. Are we seeing any other? Hands up. We have, next, Nadine?
No, we actually had Frank Donovan.
I'm sorry, Frank Donovan, yes.
Hi, thank you, Frank Donovan, 16 Spafford. Just, this is just a follow-up to last week, we had brought up, or I had brought up a potential conflict with Jim voting. I just wondered if anything, if he's going to recuse himself that the vote does take place tonight, or how you guys handling that?
Great, yes, thank, thank you Frank for that question. Jim, do you want to respond to this?
Yeah, absolutely. Frank's right, at the last meeting, he made an allegation that I have a conflict of interest regarding the memory clinic. Due to the fact that my father wasn't till recently a resident at Evita of Newburyport. Mass General Law 268A, Section 23B-3 requires a public official, elected or appointed, to consider whether his relationships and affiliations could prevent him or her from acting fairly and objectively when performing his duties. A public employee, whether elected or appointed, can avoid violating this provision by making a public disclosure of the facts. An appointed employee must make the disclosure in writing to his appointing official, the town clerk, that's the law. My public disclosure is that my father is indeed a resident of Evita in Marblehead. Prior to that, he was a resident of Evita in Newburyport. I've referenced this during many meetings and feel that it's well-known, it has been known for a while now. And having a father with dementia or in a memory clinic at an Evita facility or at any other facility, in no way will affect my ability to stay objective, fair, impartial, and do what's right for the town of Milton and its residents. Thursday, this past Thursday, I spoke with town council and determined that although there's no conflict of interest, it was suggested that it would be a good idea for me to file this disclosure form, which is called the Disclosure of Appearance of Conflict of Interest. I filed it this morning with the town clerk at 8:28 AM, it's on file for anybody to go And then after that, I called the State Ethics Commission, they have an attorney of the day, kind of a hotline or an advice line, and I spoke with them, the attorney of the day, I explained the situation. She determined that I had done what I should have done and asked me why I needed her. And I said that I was just calling to be sure that I haven't missed anything and to be sure that there wasn't anything more I should be doing. She asked me some questions regarding my financial interest or the financial interest of my immediate family, if the special permit were approved or denied, and I said that there wasn't any. So I'm satisfied that there is nothing more to pursue here. And that's what I did to follow up on last week's allegation.
Thank you.
Okay, yeah, I hadn't been in other meetings, I didn't realize you had brought that up before, but thanks for looking into that.
Great.
Appreciate that. Okay, is Nadine next? Tim, do we have Nadine?
Hi, good evening, everyone, thank you, Nadine Hannah, 11 Spafford Road. Thank you again for all of your efforts and energies in this. Of course, it goes, we all know at this point, I agree with everything that my neighbors and Bard have all put forth before you. And I just wanted to make a simple point in that, for all of the opinion given that this facility belongs here, specifically at the top of Spafford and Highland, that opinion has been given by people who are paid for by the developer largely. The town's peer reviewer has said, the problems aren't that bad or they don't exist. The neighbors have robustly brought concern, worry, significant, again, to the water, to the fire standards, et cetera, et cetera. And we have repeatedly said, we understand the town's need or want for a memory care facility in the town of Milton, but that this site is not appropriate. And for all the people who have come forward to speak as a proponent of this facility, unless they're on the payroll of the North Bridge Company, no one in town has come forward and said, yes, this is the best site for this facility. The people in Milton, the town, the residents of Milton who have come forward and have had a strong opinion about this facility in this site, have all been a proponent of a no vote. I have not heard a single person from the town of Milton come and say, although they might like or want to see a memory care, no one has come and said, put it here at the top of Highland and Spafford, because that's absolutely the best place for this to go without any cause of concern to the surrounding neighborhood, be it Spafford, be it down past Canton, be it anywhere surrounding this location. Everyone who lives in Milton who has spoken to this site has spoken to it being a to this site has spoken to it being a completely inappropriate fixture placed here. Um, we do urge you to pause or to vote no, but certainly not to allow this in with the meager mitigations that they have given and or proposed. We do not believe that there will be anything that comes of the conversation with the hospital. There will be no, you know, traffic commission coming forward with signage the moment that this is approved, saying, here you go, you know, it's, it's a one-way or it's a left turn only, or it's none of no trucks. I don't believe it will happen. It hasn't happened in the years that we've lived here. It hasn't happened in the years we've had these conversations. It hasn't happened, um, for the emails that we stopped sending because no concrete change was ever made. Um, the only concrete thing that could happen is to refuse this building to be in- implanted there at the top of our street. Thank you all again, and, um, good luck with the rest of the process.
All right. Thank you. And next we have Dan O'Neil. We can let Dan unmute?
Can you hear me?
Yes, welcome, Dan.
Great. I just had to have my wife come down there and help me with some computer issues because I'm not that computer savvy. Thank you for, uh, Dan O'Neil, uh, fifteen Stafford Road. Milton Town Meeting Member, Precinct Nine. There are so many unanswered questions that we have as neighbors. And I, I can't imagine that you as elected officials are still not being given the right answers to your questions. Even a- a- as throughout this process and, and, and even, even basically tonight, I, I think it's just, it's, it's unacceptable. In my twenty years as a government oversight official, I've never seen a peer reviewer that sides a hundred percent with the applicant. Can you really call him a peer reviewer? I've never seen an applicant's attorney that gives the planning board and other town boards legal advice on the spot. He directs the chair, uh, the madam chair on how to conduct the business of the planning board on a constant basis. He threatens the town as an applicant on what his app, his, uh, what the party he's representing on is going to do. That, that, I, I've never seen this before. This is, this is, i- i- it's, it's, it's out of control. I, I'm just, I'm putting it very, very mildly. In a last-minute effort to mitigate the potential water damage to the neighborhood here, it's specifically to, you know, to, to, to the, to the odd side of this neighborhood by the applicant's attorney and the applicant itself, even if it was urged by a planning board member. With the caveat that we as neighbors do not pursue our, our, the Conservation Commission's supersede order, uh, of conditions appeal. And not pursue any legal redress in this Superior Court. It, it, it just smacks of that they're hiding something. They want you to rush this through because they know that this is a flawed project that's too big. It's driven simply by profit and greed. There are so many unanswered questions. And if we have doubt here at Stafford and you as an individual planning board member have any doubt that you're not getting the true facts of what they're hiding, you as a, as a planning board member at a minimum should abstain from voting tonight. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Dan. Do we have any other hands up at this time? Let me see. Uh, we have Deborah Felton. Deborah, if you can unmute yourself?
Hello. Hi, it's Deborah Felton, um, a town meeting member, precinct two. Um, as you all know, I did come and testify at one point in support of the memory care unit at that property because I think it is the best use of that property. And nobody's threatening anything to put out something else there, but something else will go there. And we've seen this time and again in this town where people aren't thinking about what is best for the entire town and only thinking of their neighborhood. And there will be something there, and I think the memory care unit is the best. I think you have followed a very good process. I think you have opened your hearing to hear as many people as possible, and I really appreciate that. You, uh, there's nothing to hide here. I think everybody has been completely honest and you've gotten all the advice that is necessary to make the decision. And just because one does not agree with somebody's decision, it is, um, I would be, uh, concerned about challenging somebody's veracity or expertise because, um, somebody does not agree with the opinion. So I urge you to take a vote. Um, there have been many hearings. I've been watching them all, and I'm sure you're all tired, just like everybody else is. Um, I think we need to, um, see this process through, and I urge you to vote yes tonight. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Deborah. Any other hands? I'm not seeing any. Oh, no, I'm sorry, now I am. But I don't know if these are hands up that have, people have already spoken. Um. Let's go to Teresa O'Brien, who has not had a chance to speak yet.
Hello.
Hi, Teresa.
This is Teresa O'Brien at forty-two Stafford Road. Uh, I just wanted to say, no one is saying, don't put memory center next door, but would be great if it could be smaller. And let's, looking at the planning board or the, um, whatever we're going for, that they voted that they should put something here back in two thousand and fifteen. The town has changed so much since then. It would be great if they could have done something for the community. No one, like, putting a memory center there that's going to cost what, uh, a month for residents and half those residents won't even live in town? It would have been great if they could put something there for the teens, a teen center that high school students could go play basketball or something, or put more sports fields. Um, put maybe a school there or something else that actually everyone in town would have used versus something that is profit for the hospital. They're gonna make tons of money off this. And North Bridge is gonna make tons of money of this. It's nothing for all of town. It's for a few members of the town that can actually afford this. Um, and I'd also like to just comment on traffic, the light. I've seen so many comments lately, even since our last meeting, on Facebook, talking about the light at Thatcher, Canton, um, just how bad it is right there. And it's just going to get worse once all these trucks have to go that way and come up Highland. And the Winter Valley extra building, the school, if they put that in, the forty-B, all of these developments right there is just so much for this area of town. Thank you, and I really urge everyone to vote no and to make this smaller and not to do it at all. Thank you again. Bye-bye.
Great, thank you. Um, now we have Christina De La Cruz, who's also, who's not spoken yet. And then we'll go back to those who.
Can you hear me?
Christina, yes, welcome.
Oh, thank you. Thanks for, uh, the time, Christina De La Cruz. I own, uh, twenty-two and twenty Clifton Road. Um, my concern is, you know, in listening to this, um, and has been is the traffic. Um, you know, today I was walking down Stafford and there was a car parked on the street. It's a narrow street. And there is not any sidewalks, so there were three cars trying to get by, two coming up the street, one, three coming down. I'm trying to walk. I have my dog. I'm walking with my sister and this is without, you know, a memory care of having, what, seventy, you know, units there. Um, there's just so much traffic and it is a cut-through today. Um, and my concern is, from what I'm hearing, is there hasn't been really any, you know, traffic, um, I guess, study done. And that's surprising to me prior to a vote of, you know, allowing this facility to, um, be built. So my request, and I support, you know, my neighbors and I love Milton, and that's why I moved here. And I read about the history of Milton, like I am obsessed with Milton and have been. However, like, I'm pretty concerned these days, especially with the traffic and knowing that, you know, I'm on Clifton, it could be a cut-through, knowing the water, um, table, um, effects and running some pumps all the time. I mean, I really think at least at the minimal postponing the vote would be, you know, something that would be helpful while we gather more information. So I appreciate your time, um, and thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, and we can go now. Um, uh, Gene, you have your hand up, and then Bard. I don't know if it's a new hand or if it's up from previous.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, yes, Gene.
I, in regards to, you know, when people say, well, something's gonna go there. One, I'm not so sure anything's ever gonna go there because we've never discussed the sewer. And I believe the connection on Stafford is illegal. And I believe the two-inch ejecta line that myself and my neighbors can't tie into is illegal. But also, the town did pass a C P A. This neighborhood doesn't have any parks. Um, the C P A, you know, they claim they want to preserve a historic site. This is certainly a historic site. It's the old Russell Horse Farm. And secondly, you know, uh, to protect the wildlife, yes, they'd be protecting the wildlife if the C P A bought it. And thirdly, open space. And yes, um, if something was to go there, I'd like to see the town buy it with the C P A money and do something that, um, this neighborhood could enjoy. Because I say, this neighborhood, we don't have Cunningham Park, we don't have Andrews Field, we don't have Kelly Field. We have nothing here for the, uh, youth. And there's been a turnover of this neighborhood where all the original people who bought the houses back in the fifties and sixties, they're all turning over. It's now all young families. And, um, that, that's an option for the hospital. I also think the new memory care clinic could go if, if we had to have a compromise right on the hospital property itself. When you pull in on the Highland Street entrance, there's plenty of room on the left next to the police station. And instead of building thousands and thousands of feet of retaining wall, they could put another level on the parking garage. And I originally suggested when this whole thing started that the hospital could landbank a lot of this wetland across the street, if not all of it, and develop the wet acre between the hospital and the library. And they could have shared parking, which they both desperately need. So there's plenty we can talk about. I think this decision is being rushed. And again, I urge a vote, a no vote or that we postpone it and just keep the conversation going until we come up with a mutually beneficial situation for everyone, a, a win-win-win situation. Thank you again for your time.
Great. Thank you, Gene. And Bard, you can speak next.
Thank you, Madam Chairwoman. Thanks, everyone, again. I, I wanted to, um, answer, I think the question was asked at the beginning. Um, there was a question, I think, um, you know, Cheryl had suggested that some of the traffic mitigation funds be put towards a, a more comprehensive traffic study. And then I think, um, Meredith, you had said, well, maybe we should ask the neighbors for input if, if that's the, the preferred first step, or if, um, speed humps on Stafford would be a preferred first step. And, uh, to answer that, I think I would, uh, I would say, um, you know, for us living on Stafford, uh, the, you know, the speed humps, and I provided some data last time, that, you know, they cost about two thousand dollars each per, uh, two thousand dollars each per the mass, um, you know, Mass Gov website. Um, I think that would be really, that kind of a physical barrier would be a practical way to ensure public safety. And I think above all else, you know, I try to be practical and, you know, our town is changing. And we are obviously gonna get more traffic from any number of projects and the re, you know, the cost, the expense, and I guess the logistics from talking with, um, you know, uh, D P W in the past of putting in sidewalks on Stafford, um, you know, is, is, it, it's a more challenging thing where speed humps is relatively short money by comparison. And it, it, but it provides real public safety protection. Um, so I would say as, as, you know, a, a neighbor, a resident here, living a few hundred feet from where this facility might go, um, the speed humps would be kind of the, selfishly for us, I think, would be real protection. But I do think the town, you know, it's one of the points a prior caller made about think beyond yourself and your neighborhood. You know, this corridor here is used by so much of the town. And if you look at the map, there's so much of our town that is disconnected and from east to west. So I really do think it behooves the town to do a more comprehensive traffic study with all these projects coming online to figure out, um, you know, maybe some of these streets should be one ways in one direction. Maybe we should have a different traffic pattern. Maybe we have to take off some of the do not enters, like Highland Street is a permanent do not enter. I don't wanna send more traffic to my neighbors on Upper Highland, but, um, you know, some of these things have been put in place have created the current condition. So if we really wanna, uh, think bigger for the whole town so that people aren't taking half an hour to get from East Milton to the high school or, you know, to go to Flatley Field for the kid soccer, and it takes you, you know, y- you're better off playing in a neighboring town than you are trying to get from one side of Milton to the next. It's probably in the best interest of the town as well as the neighborhood to have that traffic study. So that's kind of a long-winded answer, but, but hopefully it helps, you know, sort of like immediate relief. And then maybe longer-term planning for the whole town, um, and not just us, I think would really be a benefit. Um, and, you know, just the final thing, you know, most of us, in fact, I'm, all of us have not been opposed to the, the memory care use case. I think what we've been opposed to is the overutilization of that site. For, you know, for those of you watching at home, um, what this developer and this applicant is asking for is to violate state law. Every single day, uh, we will be having trucks crossing over the opposite travel lane on Highland to get in and out of this facility as it is currently planned. And that's a public safety risk. That means traffic either has to stop and wait, or, um, you know, you're gonna have an accident. That means pedestrians have to be very mindful. And, and that means it makes it more difficult for all of us to, to share these streets. So there's a reason that those state regulations exist. There's a reason the town bylaws exist. Those things are not being met currently. And, you know, certainly, we're not being unreasonable by asking that, that those things be met. And, you know, for those reasons, including others, for example, in the zoning that they do not follow, particularly the site design standards where the zoning says that the plan should work with the existing terrain. I think everyone at home should understand this plan radically changes the existing terrain of the site. It reverses the hill. It builds up, you know, perching their, their building on top of a man-made hill and erecting thirteen, fourteen, sixteen, nineteen-foot retaining walls, hundreds of feet of them, um, all along the border of the wetlands and in some, in the non-disturbance zone, in some cases violating them, um, which is, you know, a violation of the town bylaw, which is never granted in eighty cases that we looked at. Um, so there's some, you know, exceptions here that are being made to the detriment of all of us. Um, so, you know, it's not just our neighborhood. Um, you know, there, there are good reasons why these state regulations for public safety are there. Um, and, and we're all, we'll all be living with the consequences. And so for those reasons, um, you know, I would also echo my neighbors and ask you to vote no, or if you feel like there's not enough information, abstain and, um, you know, you could send this back. We don't believe that they, that the developer and the applicant in Milton, uh, be at D Milton would, would be willing to just walk away from this. We know that they have places that are sixty units, not seventy units. You know, if they did it sixty units, they could move their loading dock to the back to reduce noise pollution. They could withdraw from the non-disturbance zone so they're not violating town bylaws. They could put more screen in to hide those retaining walls because now you're in drier land and, and the evergreens might live. Um, so there, there are a lot of benefits, um, to, uh, scaling back the project, you know, a minimal amount that we've asked for. And, and it's all been, it's non-negotiable, non-negotiable. There's a certain profit they wanna make. Um, so, you know, we're here saying, well, it should be non-negotiable to allow them to break state and local bylaws and regulations. So, um, you know, for all those reasons, uh, we urge you to, to either abstain or vote no. Thank you very much for your time and, and I hope everyone also understands how amazing of a board we have and how lucky we are, um, to have all of you. So thank you again.
Thank you, Bard. Appreciate that. Um, and we have Teresa O'Brien. I don't know if your hand is up from your previous, or if you'd like to unmute yourself and if there was something else you wanted to add. Okay, Teresa's hand is, is down. So anyone else, um, on the attendees who, uh, wishes to speak at this time? Okay. Um, all right, any, um, one from the board who, um, has any information, um, that they would like to seek during this public hearing? I'm not seeing anyone. All right, at this time, um, would members, um, do we feel ready to close the public hearing?
I do.
So I just have a process question. If we close the public hearing, do we actually have to take a vote tonight? Or, or don't we have so many days to take a vote?
Um, we have been asked to take a vote this evening.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing for the 111 Highland Street Memory Care Facility.
I'll second that motion.
Okay, all in favor? Roll call, Cheryl?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, now at this time, the public hearing for 111 Highland Street special permit is closed and the board can begin our deliberations. If anyone would like to go first?
How much time do we have?
As much time to deliberate as we need. Yeah. But if there's discussions from the board, um, on the information that's been provided, I'd open it up for conversation.
So I, I'll just open up part of the discussion. You know, our responsibility is to, um, render a decision about whether the application meets the zoning, whether it provides for a public good and whether impacts have been mitigated. So I think if we look at the first, whether it meets the zoning, we've been provided, um, that information in terms of the dimensional criteria, the dimensional standards, I should say. And I, I don't think there's any, uh, question that the dimensional standards have been met. There's the site plan, um, site design standards and the building design standards that I think we've had some discussion about. And we could discuss whether we think that those have been adequately, uh, met. And then we spent a lot of time, um, really talking about, um, the fact that there is no memory care, uh, facility in Milton currently, that Town Meeting approved such use on this, at this location. Um, and having considered that it would be, um, the use that would have lesser impacts than other kinds of uses that could be here. Uh, so when this was rezoned, it was rezoned with this use, um, as an allowed use here. Um, and then, you know, the, the mitigation of the impacts. I think we've spent a lot of time talking about, uh, conditions and, and what, how many conditions and whether those conditions could, could mitigate the impacts. I think we all recognize that there's, um, the situation in this location due to the hospital being here that, uh, and also due to the groundwater, uh, situation that exists here, that exists today and will exist tomorrow, no matter whether this project is approved or not. Um, to the extent that this project, um, changes things, it's required to, um, to be mitigated. So I think that's where our conversation, um, really should focus. Have we covered the, has the project and its, and what it has been proposed and in the conditions that we've put in the decision, um, adequately, uh, covers mitigating the impacts?
Okay, great, thank you.
Um, and to Cheryl, to your point about Town Meeting approving it, um, I understand that Town Meeting approved the bylaw, but it was specifically said Town Meeting was approving zoning and not approving a project.
Yeah, Maggie, that's why I said the use. Because there's been some talk about the use, you know, here, whether this is a good use for this site. And I just wanted to be clear that the use is allowed. There's other things that, that are more subjective, but the use is definitely allowed here.
And, and I don't think anybody has questioned the use.
I thought I heard some.
I have. I, um, I think there are alternatives, um, that are out there. Um, but I don't, uh, very few people have questioned the use. And, um, and the other thing are the conditions adequate? I personally don't think that they're adequate. Um, I, that's why I asked, how much time do we have? Um, and really do we want to start? Um, cause I, I believe, like for myself, that I would be a yes, like I would have been a yes a long time ago if I felt like the applicants were listening to the neighbors. And, um, a, a, and it's frustrating to me, um, not to, not wanting to support a use that Town Meeting approved. Um, because I understand the use, like I understand it very, very, very well. And, um, a, and I just, I'm disappointed that the applicant, you know, hasn't come to the table and hasn't, you know, all along, non-negotiable, 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 and that is so frustrating to me. Um, so that is, that's just one of my thoughts.
Sean or Jim?
You want to go first, Sean, or you want me to go?
Uh, sure, I, I, I probably, I think I'll speak more than once. Um, just because I think as this conversation goes along, we'll all have, we'll all have, um, varying thoughts and additional thoughts. But with respect to the non-negotiable comments that Maggie made, um, you know, I think my, what I'm gonna learn from this process is that, uh, when we pass an article in Town Meeting that allows, um, zoning and, and we, we pass an article that allowed specific number of units and beds, rooms and beds. And, uh, this applicant's been reluctant, um, to give any ground on that. And, um, I'll, I'll probably be, um, I'll be a much more, I'll be much more focused in Town Meeting with the specifics of language because I, I, uh, I like Maggie feel that, um, we, we haven't really been able to gain, um, you know, any relief from the applicant with regards to the size of the building. And, um, they have ardently, uh, pursued the number of beds and the number of rooms that is written into the article that was passed in Town Meeting. Now, um, a few meetings ago, when this conversation of size of building came up, while I have that frustration that I just mentioned, Sean Riordan, when, uh, discussing, when we were discussing size of building, um, Sean articulated for us how size of building, uh, was not significant in terms of, um, changing the balance between pervious and impervious. And what he outlined was that the, um, impervious area other than the building, the impervious area of the drive of the circular area in front of the building, uh, of the drive to the rear parking lot and the parking lot, um, that that really, it, it was a, a reduction in size of building would not provide any, um, significant relief. So while I'm frustrated that there wasn't some concession in terms of uh, number of beds, number, or number of rooms, uh, I also have to accept what our, um, what our consultant had, had said to us that it wouldn't have been a significant, uh, mitigation with regard to pervious and impervious area.
Jim, do you mind if I just jump in on something there that Sean said? Uh, you know, we talk about the zoning and the number of beds. There were some other standards, um, in the zoning. Um, for example, the, uh, coverage. So, um, the, the building exclusive, I'm just looking at right now at the zoning. The building exclusive of exterior courtyard areas and any accessory building shall cover no more than sixteen percent of the existing buildable area of the lot. And that buildable area is defined as not including wetlands and buffer zones and vernal pools, et cetera. And, uh, that the floor area ratio not be greater than twenty-three percent of the building area. And so the application is actually less than that, um, on the, on the coverage at just under fourteen percent, with the maximum at sixteen again, and the floor area at twenty-one percent, uh, with the maximum at twenty-three percent. And then on the open space, uh, a minimum of thirty-three percent of the buildable area shall be open space. And the, this application has seventy-four percent of the buildable area as open space. So these are areas in which it's not maximized, uh, to the full extent that the zoning allows. I just want to point that out.
Great, thank you.
Yeah, I mean.
Jim?
Yeah, I really thought that what was passed at Town Meeting, um, drove this use at this site. And honestly, if I was Northbridge, I would be doing the same thing. I would max it out and, and get as many beds as possible on the site, uh, because it, at the end of the day, it's a financial decision. Um, and I was hoping that we could reel, reel it in a little bit with desired guideline or with, um, convince, you know, uh, hoping the hospital would see things our way or hoping Northbridge would, would see things our way. Um, and I do agree that if you scale it back to fifty beds, you're still tearing up the land. You're still building that massive causeway. We're still dealing with the nineteen-foot stone wall in places. Um, and, you know, I've written down a whole, just every topic that I think was important from traffic all the way down. And, um, unfortunately, I haven't seen, you know, one large thing or a lot of little things that, that would compel me to vote no, especially because we're going against Town Meeting. And because the alternative is a forty B. I mean, I really believe that they, um, the hospital will do a forty B. If this starts to take too long and cost them too much money and they just can't make a memory clinic work here, the alternative is to sell to a, a, a third party and then, uh, put in a forty B. I mean, all the hard, all the heavy lifting to engineer access to the site has already been done. So a forty B developer will just take that and maximize the number of units that will go there. And I think that impact is way worse than a memory clinic on the neighborhood and on the town as a whole. So, yeah, that's where I'm at.
Maggie, were you gonna say something?
Yeah, which, well, um, again, I, there's a lot of miscellaneous. I do believe that our town, what makes our town so special is all the individual neighborhoods. And I think every neighborhood brings something different to the town. And what affects one neighborhood, it truly affects all of us. Um, and every neighborhood is important. And, um, a, and I, a, and I know that the neighbors don't want to be viewed as they're obstructionist, just like I don't. Um, they're protecting their neighborhoods. And even though, even though Town Meeting passed, you know, um, uh, uh, you know, what is allowed, they're all maximums. Just because they were maximums, it doesn't mean that we actually have to allow it. So that's my frustration. If you go down the whole list, maximum, maximum, maximum. And yes, I understand Sean Riordan said, um, that, um, the impervious surfaces wouldn't be, um, affected or diminished. But everything else would be. The number of, um, deliveries would be reduced because of the number of beds would be reduced. So the number of patients would be reduced or residents would be reduced. Then the number of linen, linen deliveries and the trash coming. And all the other uses would be diminished. Um, so I do think that it is in our purview to, um, deny this permit on the size of the building because it, it is written that that's maximum. You know, I have issues like with timeline, this whole process. I, I agree, um, that it, even though it's been a year, um, we have not been getting information in a timely manner. I mean, we were getting information, um, today. You know, um, it's hard to digest everything in a few hours. And I feel like we're being pressured to digest it quickly. And that's not how, that's not how a good process works. Like if we're talking about process, and I think we all like a, a good process, like in our professions, we like a good process. And, you know, and, and this is, this has not been a good process. It's been a lot of information last minute. And we go late into the night and everybody works so hard, everybody does. I'm not critical of anybody, all sides, all opinions. But I'm, I am a little critical of the timeline. Um, and, and I don't like to be pressured. I don't like to be pressured. I like to digest things. I like to talk, um, to various people, um, in, in, in digest it and get people's opinion from all, all neighborhoods and all towns. Um, so I haven't been happy with this, um, the process. The biggest thing for me is all the environmental impacts. Um, you know, there's so many impacts to the wetlands, to the vernal pools. Um, you know, again, I mentioned it before, I'm your representative to the Climate Action Committee. And, you know, we're talking about, um, you know, our, our whole, the whole ecosystem of our town. You know, and even the UN has declared that this is the decade of restoration. And the best way to restore all of the loss and to help with climate change is not to destroy. And this, we're destroying this piece of property, destroying. And it's not just this piece of property, you know, it's the forty B piece of property next to you, Cheryl. We're destroying that. There's been no environmental impact analysis that's been done. Um, you know, um, there's just too much commercial pressure on, on our town and not just our town, but all towns. And there's too much asphalt, too little green space. And, you know, things have changed in ten years, um, you know, since the master plan was written. And we need to review it, uh, we need to review it. Um, you know, just recently at a selectman's meeting, they had, um, you know, the Nampontet River Waterway in, and they warned Milton that climate change will lead to an increase in flood plains, that stormwater would increase by two hundred percent right in Pine Cherry Brook and its wetlands. You know, it's, um, that you look back to what's happened in Lemonster last year. You know, and our own governor said, this is the world we now live in. Every day we see weather that we haven't seen before. Things are happening that people haven't dealt with before. And here we are, purpose, purposely destroying, um, a very important, uh, piece of property. You know, just so much has changed. And I just think we have not looked at the environmental impacts to this. Removing three hundred trees is huge. It's huge. And it's not just be impactful to this neighborhood, it'll be impactful for our whole town. So if we're gonna look at the impacts of the town, here we are trying to adopt, you know, this advanced stretch code to help decrease our, you know, greenhouse gases. And then, and the next, you know, the next page, we're like taking down three hundred trees. It makes no sense to me.
One thing I would say, if, I'm sorry if I may, on that one, Maggie, on the tree removal, you know, like the two lots on Central Ave. You know, people have property rights.
No, I understand.
And there are property rights related to this particular piece of property as well. So we have to be mindful of that aspect of our decision making, of what the law allows for with those property rights. And, you know, to your point about larger issues in the town and tree removal and stormwater, it is a larger issue that's beyond this particular project that I'm anxious to hear with the Climate Action Planning Committee this report's going to look like. I I do think we have to make sure that we, we bear in mind what our responsibility is as well. That we, this is an application under a particular section of our zoning. And we have to make our decision based on on that zoning. And if, to the extent that something is in the zoning that overlaps with those concerns that you have, that we can consider that. But I think we can't make this project and this particular site the story of saving the town from other strategies that are happening elsewhere when that's not something that the zoning can do.
Right. And one of the things of the this particular zoning is for a public good. And I don't, and that's a huge part of this zoning. And that it will not cause any detriment to the neighborhood and will serve the public good and will provide a public benefit. And removing all those trees, interfering and interrupting our wetlands and vernal pools do not provide a public benefit nor a public good.
If it goes forty B, how can you control the number of trees that come down?
So, so I can't be directed by fear. I think every project has to be a standalone project on its own merits. And I think we're being pressured out of fear. And I think that's a shame. And I don't think BI should be doing that. I've always called it Milton Hospital, but someone reminded me recently, it's not our nice little Milton Hospital that we all grew up with and loved. It's not, it's changed. You know, when when my mother was there in December, she spent two nights in the hallway. And that never would have happened at the old Milton Hospital I loved. It's BI. And they're selling to a for-profit business. And we have to view this as the merits of a of this application. And I think, you know, as Sean pointed out earlier, that if BI wants to remain or they're concerned with being part of our Milton community, then they shouldn't be threatening that.
Yeah, I don't take it as fear, Maggie. I take it as a, as a smart business decision. If they don't get this, they're going to do that. It's a plan B. I'd be doing the same thing if I were them. I would much rather see a memory clinic than, I don't know how many units of forty B you can put in there because we lose all control with forty B. And the impact is going to be a hell of a lot worse for the neighborhood and the town at whole, at large. I mean, I can't, can't state that enough. And I do think they're gonna do it because they're not Milton Hospital anymore, because they're a conglomerate. They want to maximize their return on their land. It's it's just simple business. Think you're on mute, Meredith.
Thank you. I just was gonna say, I just agree with everything that the board has has stated. But we do need to make a decision based on on the zoning. We do know that this process is not over. Depending on if we if we do decide to grant an approval, this will still go through the DEP process. There will be standards that will definitely have to be met. Regards to, you know, the engineering department, the DPW is gonna have to review all connections that everything is done properly. So our fire department, we've heard from them. And I do believe that we need to rely on the experts. We are not experts. And as much as I question and challenge, as you know, I have, I do believe that we need to rely on our peer review experts, our fire chief, the engineering department. I I think these are the the folks and DEP that will ultimately review this. So I think we have to consider the zoning within that context. Any anything else?
Yeah, I mean, my last thing is, like, there, there's just no neighborhood support for this. And in my experience of following the planning board process, I I find it unfathomable that a project would be passed and given a special permit that has zero neighborhood support. Like even in the end, four forty granted Ave ended up having neighborhood support. And this has zero neighborhood support. It seems that's just my fault a little bit.
And I do want to add, I I just want to thank the neighbors because they've been exceptional. The amount of the questions, the thoughtfulness, the concern, I, you know, I I understand as neighbors. But I I am also concerned. We have, we have been put in a really difficult position, which is unfortunate. And I agree, Maggie, it's no longer Milton Hospital. This is now the BID system. And they do have a fiduciary responsibility. And they, if this project is not approved, we have been told without question, there will be a plan B. And it will have a greater significant impact to the neighborhood, which is, I I just would not want to see that for any of these neighbors. They are just really wonderful, wonderful residents. And I just would not want to see a forty B project that would be three stories, five stories. We 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 don't know. It's an unknown. But there will be something that will definitely have a greater significant impact, a detrimental impact much greater than this site, I believe, this this use.
And then I think that would be a shame because BID has a board comprised of Milton residents. And if they don't step up to defend and protect our neighborhoods, that's shameful. That is just very shameful. And I would expect all of our, the board members to really step up because they are our neighbors and you see them every day.
Well, let's, I think, be mindful about the kind of terminology we use for our neighbors too. Bid is our neighbor as well. Some of our residential neighbors have sold their properties and forty Bs have been developed on those properties that our neighbors sold. Other people have sold their property and every tree and every rock is being removed. So we don't call out every single person who's changing their property by name and call them villains. And so I think we need to be mindful of our our language here and come back to the actual decision and the zoning. So I would say we've spent with the applicant and with their their team and with our peer review consultants quite a lot of time in thinking about what are the impacts and how they can be mitigated. Stormwater has been one of the significant questions. And we've pressed, I think, our peer review consultant, Sean Reardon, quite a bit on, in in some ways, maybe unfairly, on his own expertise, on the expertise within his company. And he's come back to us and provided us with his reasons for his opinions and his qualifications and those of civil engineers and hydrologists within his firm at Tetra Tech. I certainly have believe I need to and the board should rely upon our peer review expert for stormwater. We are not civil engineers and stormwater hydrologists, et cetera. We also have an opinion from our engineering department. We've had opinions from our fire chief, who's worked with our peer review consultant as well, as well as our traffic consultant and peer review on the traffic. This is our standard practice in the nine years I've been on the board is to rely on these experts to help us on these very technical components of these applications. And they've provided us with good guidance about what we should do and think about in these conditions that we've put in the decision. So I, I think that if we think about the things that are discretionary in terms of the design standards in the site and in the building, we've pushed on those. And I've, as well, I agree that I would have liked to have seen some things changed in the design. I pushed and pushed for certain things so there would be less cut and fill. But then there's a certain point where this building type, the function of this building dictates how it can be designed. It's not the same as some other building types which have more flexibility in how they function. And I've been educated about that through this process. So I think they have done and to the best that this building can do in terms of meeting those standards.
And I would just add that Northridge does have a, an excellent reputation for what they do. They, they definitely are a premier memory care, assisted living facility and and have a very good reputation in the community. And I would like to, to say that that we have added some real significant conditions, including the bonding that are, that are protections, again, for this neighborhood, which I'm grateful that those were accepted conditions.
You know, with regard to some of the comments that was stated earlier, and I I do agree with Cheryl. Every property owner in town has rights. Doesn't matter who it is, whether you own five thousand square feet or you own a hundred thousand square feet. So we do have to acknowledge that this property is owned and and they do have rights. I do feel everyone has had a chance to exercise their rights. We we have, we have listened to the neighbors. I think, I think, well, we've never really stopped listening to the neighbors. And we've listened to them through tonight. And and, yes, they will say that the meeting closed because the applicant requested closure and we accepted that. So they may not agree with me, that they may say we didn't listen to them enough. I think we've worked to try to improve some of the conditions that could arise as a result from development. I also feel like there is some pre-existing conditions that have made any proposed development of that land parcel, you know, subject to the types of concerns that the neighbors have had. You know, obviously Stafford Road has had problems with traffic for a very long time. And and this, this, this facility hasn't even been built. You know, the the project, any project, it requires multiple factors for it to occur. First, you know, it has to prefer that it wants to develop. But there has to be zoning compliance, there has to be building code compliance, there has to be stormwater management compliance, there has to be fighting code compliance, and they'd have to be compliant with all the conditions that were outlined. So it's not a matter of development without restriction. You know, this development, if it were to pass, and it has, it has future thresholds that it will have to accomplish. It is gonna have to accomplish DEP approval. That is the highest authority in the state for stormwater management. And it's not, it's not foregone that, that that will be achieved. They'll have to achieve it. I I do want to say something on stormwater because I I want to make the record clear. Last, in the last meeting, I was, and prior to the last meeting, I was asking the applicant to create some funding, you know, for the residents to have available to them to address their own individual stormwater issues. And I did have conversations with the applicant. In the course of those conversations, I never anticipated that the applicant would expect that the neighbors would withdraw their request of the DEP review. That was not a conversation I had with Ned. It didn't occur to me that that is what the applicant would expect. And it didn't occur to me that that would actually be something that we would, we would, representing the neighbors, would have to give in. So at that time, my goal was to try to create a fund that the applicant would make available for the residents. And I never expected that we would forego DEP approval. And I wanted to make the record clear if if anyone thought that I was, you know, considering an exchange of a hundred thousand dollars for DEP approval, no way. I would never have been on board with that. So we find ourselves, I think, in a very difficult situation. I think no matter what decision is made here tonight, there'll be people that will be dissatisfied with the process, dissatisfied with the decision, and probably maybe eventually, okay, but, you know, for the near term, probably very dissatisfied with the outcome of this. Yeah, I think it's unfortunate because I I do think that, you know, we've worked to try to improve the proposed development and to make it a better project.
Any for, any other comments? Okay. Not seeing any.
So Meredith, I'll make a motion to approve the special permit and the site plan approval for the special care, memory care residence development at one oh seven, one eleven, zero Highland Street. And that the decision be in the form as reviewed and finalized at our meeting tonight.
Is there a second on that?
I'm sorry, second?
Okay. Any further discussion? No further discussion? Okay. Then I think, are we ready to take a vote? I think we need to, now that we have a motion and a second. All right, if we would like to start, Cheryl?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Maggie?
No.
Sean?
Yes.
And myself, I, yes. Okay, that concludes our, the evening of discussion of one eleven Highland Street special permit. Thank you all, and thank you again for all the neighbors and all of your input. This was a, this was a difficult, difficult.
Meredith?
Yep.
One, one last thing. I didn't include in the motion, but we could have a separate motion to authorize the Director of Planning and Community Development to sign the decision on our behalf.
Is that, is there a second on that?
Well, I have a question about that. So when I ran, I made a promise to myself that I wouldn't want my signature on something I did not approve. So I just want to make sure that I, it's not implied. So I just want to make sure that I, it's not implied that I, that I'm, that I'm in support of this project. So I think I would prefer that we all individually sign it.
Okay.
Fine.
Tim, do you want to comment on that?
I, I think, I think, I think you're good either way. We, we've had, I, I actually don't know what the, what the actual formality is here. I, I just know that I've seen, you know, approvals from the planning board that have three, four, five signatures on them. So if, if, if each individual member wants to sign or not sign, if you want to authorize me, I think you're, you're in the clear either way.
Okay. All right, out of respect for Maggie's request, why don't we just leave it that we will each individually sign? And Tim, once you have that decision?
Yeah, we'll have that printed out and out at the office for you. And, you know, over the next day or so, I know tomorrow's a big day. Maybe on your way back from your polling place, you can stop by Town Hall and sign. That would be, that would be great.
All right, great, all right, thank you, thank you all.
Thank you all for, just thank you all for an incredible process. We appreciate all of your time and effort. Thank you.
Great, thank you. So moving on, we are now on item number five, which is our old business, the MBTA Communities Zoning Discussion. The review and the vote on the Technical Assistance RFP responses. Tim, do you want to introduce this?
Yes, so it's maybe a little bit more than a month ago. The board approved a scope of work for consultant services to assist us in, you know, similar, similar to our original go around with MBTA communities to operate the, to, to, to run scenarios of the compliance model and to assist us in, in the, in the, the sort of the conception and analysis of new zoning districts. We sent that along to four different firms, to MAPC, to UTIL, which had been working with us previously, to Innocent Associates, and to the Barrett Planning Group. We did only get one affirmative response from UTIL, which I sent around last week, should be in your materials folders. You know, everybody else, whether through a sort of a lack of bandwidth, it was mostly, everyone is busy with this work and frankly, you know, wasn't able to take on additional work with Town of Milton. So we do have the one response from UTIL. I think, you know, they, they, you know, for, for whatever came out of the wash in, in our first process, I think, you know, with, with the board's direction, I think they can, they can continue to do a good job. I think that their, their work product was good. And again, I think, you know, having, having gone through this already once before, I think we know a little bit more about the model, we know a little bit more about the law, we know a little bit more about the guidelines. I think the board's ability to, you know, really kind of get what they want out of this is, is, you know, and that's, that's not a knock or anything, I think we're all kind of walking around in the tall grass, you know, last time. I think, I think we're much better prepared to have a really efficient, you know, process with UTIL. So that's where we are.
Tim, one question. Would the team that UTIL would provide to us be Matthew and Zoe, or would they propose a different team?
I'm bringing up the proposal right now.
They did, they did propose it, Sean, I, I did look at that, they did, they have a few other folks that are assisting. One of the things that I, while you're pulling that up, Tim, if I may, Meredith, is I noticed that they weren't specific about two different compliance paths, or at least two, I guess. So that was something I called Tim about, and I'm hoping, Tim, that you had a chance to speak with UTIL about that. And then the other thing I really think we could, we should really think about and focus on is the schedule. And maybe we could do that, I mean, if we all agreed that we would authorize engagement with them. I'd like to spend like the first meeting with them, really kind of talking about how the schedule would work, just because I kind of feel as if the last time around, we were just kind of going from meeting to meeting and reacting instead of really sort of setting some milestones in the process. So if the board needs to make decisions by a certain date to meet a schedule, do we think that's enough adequate time to make those decisions? Sort of really talk through the schedule and the deliverables. I know there's a portion of their proposal that has that, Tim, if you're able to screen share it, there's, it has the schedule and it has the milestones. It's not necessarily the detailed description of, well, there's the detailed description. But the, which we, of course, should look at, but the that, yeah, I, I guess we, we need to maybe jump back and forth. But I was concerned about basically how quickly item one has to get done in. You know, sort of the, I guess there's going to be district boundary discussion in terms of responses and revisions. But three weeks seems like a pretty short amount of time. But anyway, I don't know that we have to resolve it tonight, but I really do think a conversation with them, you know, at a meeting to really talk through their thoughts about this would be helpful to me.
Tim, is this, I'm looking at the timeline, the one, the same one you have, they have it on my screen as well. Was, was this the timeline that they created? Did we have a guideline for a timeline?
I think the, the, and, and I'd have to go back and check what the exact verbiage in the proposal was. But I think we had been, you know, based on feedback from, from the town administrator's office, you know, assuming a late September, early October town meeting. And you can kind of see that kind of air out, you know, over here. I know since then, you know, the board has kind of discussed, you know, this, do we need to have two specials? You know, one in October, one in December, if we need time. You know, we haven't broached that with, with the select board of the town administrator yet. But I think, you know, that's definitely something, you know, it's, UTIL thinks they can get it done. I tend to kind of, you know, agree with, with Cheryl's concern just, just a bit. You know, just knowing that, again, I, I said earlier, I think we can be more, more efficient than last time. But also, this is, it is a very tight timeline. I, I haven't been able to get clarity on the sort of the multiple options. I'll, I'll follow up with UTIL about that. I know it's not specifically called out, but also, you know, you, you may be able to kind of generally read that assumption into some of the, the tasks that they propose. But we should, you know, obviously get some clarity on that from them, which I will, I will follow up on.
Yeah, I, I agree with your concern and Cheryl's too. That schedule has us about eight weeks to a public meeting presentation.
So if you go to the detail part now, Tim, I know I was kind of going back and forth. They're not really. So there, that item one, which was about a month for the first three tasks. And then the visualization, I think, followed it a little bit. And then, but if you go down to item two, which is the revisions, so a public meeting presentation. If you go now back to the schedule, when is that public meeting presentation? Under 2.2 there?
Yeah, it's like the last week in June.
Yeah. And, and there's some time preparing for that, right? So that's, it really is almost, and it won't be the first week of May, obviously, that we're starting with them. If, if we authorize them and they come to the, if they're able to come on the ninth, we're really removing that first week as well.
Yeah, so that's my, my concern is we know that the SJC is not meeting and making a decision until October. So my question is why are we kind of rushing this process? I feel like the town should have a December town meeting. I think this is an unrealistic schedule. And I, I, and I don't know if we have to go back to the selectmen or not to check in. But I would think that we should let them and let them know what our concerns are and that hopefully they will schedule an October meeting. And, and, and because I don't want to do a lot of, not that I'm afraid of doing work, but we have a, you know, very busy schedule. And why rush things if we don't have to? And then we're always going to be late, we're always going to be late.
One thing I would say is I think we need to, to set some parameters in the beginning. I, I do think we need to get the public input. So I, I do think that just the scorecard and the survey questions that have been floating around for a bit now, if we could discuss in our meeting on May 9th. We need to help guide our consultants. So, and, and we need to help, you know, they said it, they responded to a schedule that we provided or sort of mapped out. But I think it's our opportunity to, to talk with them about, you know, what we would like to see and have them respond to us of what they think is a reasonable amount of time to do it, rather than the actual end date. So I'm kind of thinking about working from the task, like, and our expectations being aligned and then they telling us how much time they need for it. So we need to tell them how much, how many public meetings we think we need. We need to talk about where we're going to, how we're going to solicit public feedback and how they're going to, we're going to consider that feedback and how they're going to consider that feedback. Should we have a public forum right off the block, right out of the blocks? You know, because a lot of people, I don't actually think truly understand the requirements. There was actually an excellent article in the Boston Globe today outlining sort of some of the just factual aspects of the, of the zoning. But in any case, I would like to recommend that we go forward with UTIL. Sorry, Meredith, you were going to speak before I said.
That's what I was just going to say. Let's, let's decide if we want, if we, if this is.
Yeah. So I would say.
Want to work with UTIL and then we can discuss, I, I think we should have, let them present and, and offer the kickoff meeting, the May 9th meeting. Meanwhile, Tim will be able to get more information. I agree with Maggie that, that creating an unrealistic date of a town meeting when, when we know that the SJC is not even going to meet until the mid-October. So we won't even know, you know, we don't want to schedule a town meeting based on this. That's, you know, in advance of the results of the, of the decision of the court. So I, you know, setting our kickoff meeting and then I think we discuss with UTIL going over our schedule.
So I also want, like to, I know I've done some analysis and further analysis of the parcels within some of the districts. And I'm, I'm thinking I would like to be able to review that both with all of you and with UTIL. So if we can think about, about that meeting that would be a kickoff with them, do we also intend that to be a discussion of a, of a scorecard or a way to measure the districts about the public?
I think we had said we want to start, I think we want to start with the survey and the scorecard.
Right, okay. So I'm just trying to understand whether UTIL is going to be part of that or not, do, do we think?
So ju- just to, just to kind of chime in, we'll need to, so the, the ninth is, is a possibility. You know, the, the, the town administrator is going to need to sign a contract. The contract with UTIL is with the town. That's how, how all of our contracts work. So we'll need to sort of, you know, the planning board will recommend to the select board that we engage and, and, you know, the select board meets before town meeting, you know, we could see about getting on that agenda. There's just a little bit more back and forth. UTIL has already signed a contract with the town. It shouldn't take a lot of time to review a fresh one on their end. But there are some steps in here that are just kind of timeline steps that need to be taken. So I think focusing on work that the board can do itself for the ninth. And if we can get UTIL in, then great. But I think, you know, it's, 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 there, there, there'll be a definite for the second meeting in May and a possibility for the first meeting in May.
Right. So the, the analysis that I've done, just so you know, is just taking a look at how many lots fall into certain size categories. Because we set our minimum lot size 7,500 in some areas. And there's a certain number of parcels that are not, therefore don't contribute to that, which affects our unit capacity in those areas. I have analyzed what the unit capacity and the net new was in those prior districts. And the net new was not 70, as we talked about. And I really just want people to understand that before we jump back into looking at these districts along the trolley, which we know is going to be an area of focus. So that we truly understand this area, which has over 300 parcels. Okay, so that.
Yep. That seems reasonable that we could.
And when do we, when would we give like a suggestion as to like a different parcels that we haven't even looked at yet?
I think that could be with UTIL, but if we wanted to do it together first and then give it to UTIL at the following meeting, that seems like a possibility as well.
Okay. And when do we give, if we want to add a couple of questions to the survey? Do we, are we discussing that now or is that at our, at our next meeting?
I think that's at our next meeting.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then is this coming out of our budget or is this the grant money?
There is, a portion of it is grant funding and then a portion of it will be planning board budget. I think, I think we've got $20,000, give or take a couple bucks left in, in grant funding. And then the remainder would be planning board budget, which, which planning board has its entire budget left for this fiscal year. So there's, there's, there's plenty of, of money for this contract.
But then we'll also have to fund a 10% article, right? Out of our own pocket, out of our budget with no grant money?
That's correct.
So do you think we'll have money for both?
Yes, I, 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 I think there will. And, and again, you know, let me, let me bring this back up just to see what the, the final figure is. Because we had said a $50,000 not to exceed on this. So the, the final price proposal from UTIL is 49,914. It's funny, funny how that always.
Well, they have a 40 and then there's some additional pieces.
Yeah. So, so that, and, and so that'll, that'll be part of my, my kind of follow up with them. But all that said, you know, there is, like I said, $20,000 in grant funding. And then the planning board has its, its whole $50,000 budget. So if there is, you know, additional scope that we need to add to this, you know, additional kind of, you know, creative invoicing to make sure that we're keeping, you know, stuff segregated. You know, well, we, we should have the flexibility to do that.
So we should also make sure we're going to have funds for an economic, well, I guess that could come in the next fiscal year, actually, because the new fiscal year starts in July, right? So that, and then also design guidelines. I know it's something we've talked about and have thought would be valuable. And if we did have, you know, that extra time, like if we did have until December, I think we don't, we don't necessarily want to use it and not get to design guidelines, I think. I think, you know, it would be useful to know how much time that might be too. That might be a two or three month effort as well. And how much fee, I've forgotten what the fee was for the Milton Village one. Do you recall, Tim?
Uh, no, I don't.
I, it seems like it was around 20,000.
Around 20, okay.
So design guidelines are above and beyond the 50? So we just blew our budget, so we have no money for the 10%.
No, no, but Jim, our budget, this fiscal year ends the end of June. So we start a new fiscal year July 1. So as long as town meeting passes, the boards and committees budget next week, we'll, we'll start with a new 50 grand as of July 1.
Okay. Oh, that's great then, that's good. So that means we have to spend our 50, right?
Yeah, that's why Tim said you have to get it under contract and get creative with invoices. That's why we don't. Yeah, that's why Tim said you have to get it under contract and get creative with invoices. That's why we don't want to delay either, because you don't want to have to turn money back in, basically.
Well, that's good. UTIL is our only candidate, right? So we might as well just approve it now. We have no, we're not making a choice here. UTIL is the only person that responded and there, we have the only one proposal, right?
And I and I do think we need to move forward so we can get somebody under contract.
I think uh as long as we can continue to refine the scope and the schedule, I'm perfectly happy to move forward tonight.
Okay. So can I have a, is there a motion?
All right, I'll make a motion to recommend that the select board engage UTIL um on behalf of the planning board to um develop MBTA zoning for their proposal and to continue to work with the planning department uh to finalize the scope and schedule.
Wow, nice job, Cheryl.
Wait, so so they would only work with the planning department for the schedule, not the planning board?
All right, planning board and department.
Great.
Second.
So amended second. Okay, great. All right, roll call on that. Uh, Cheryl?
Yes.
I know it's a minor thing. Can we, can we just reference the date of their proposal? April 22nd, 24?
Friendly amendment accepted.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, roll call, Sean?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Cheryl?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you. So, Tim, get that all set. Um, and then the final item on our agenda for this evening is the East Milton zoning discussion and vote on MAPC contract amendment. Um, Tim, if you want to just uh open that up.
Okay, can you all see that?
Yes.
Yes.
Um, so this is just um the 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 actual text of the amendment is very, very simple. Um, and then the reasoning behind it is, um, you know, again, uh putting together the actual zoning language product. Um, MAPC is confident they'll be able to get that done in the the term of the original contract. Uh, but they would like additional time to focus on the design guidelines component. And so the request is, um, you know, to to end the contract on November 30th as opposed to, I believe, June 30th, uh, which is in the original. Um, I think it's a good idea.
I would agree, giving that the time it needs.
I'll make a motion to approve amendment number one to the MAPC contract for consultant services for East Milton overlay zoning.
I'll second.
I'm sorry, Sean, I'm gonna go back and say as dated April 10th, 2024.
Oh, oh, I'll second.
Very good.
And this money comes from grants as well, not out of our budget, right?
Um, there is a po- so, so there's a portion of it that comes from a state grant. Um, another portion that comes out of the MPIC budget, and then a third portion that comes out of a second uh grant that we got from the South Shore Chamber of Commerce. Um, so no planning board budget in this one.
Oh, great.
Was that that last minute need to match for a grant that the MPIC was had a meeting scheduled and was asked to do some time ago now, but that's where it came from.
Yeah, I know I'm going backwards, but I just keep going back to MBTA and the 10% plan and how much money we're going to have left. And it looks like 30 grand, so it's almost like we can't do anything else. I mean, this is great because it's great, but I don't want to hold up, I don't want to hold up the vote. I'm just thinking this stuff through a little slow, so yeah.
Right, good question. All right, so on the, we have a um motion and a second? Correct. Um, so roll call. Cheryl?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
So Meredith, one one more, one more quick thing. Um, I I had sent along, it might have been before the last meeting or the meeting prior. Um, in addition to this contract amendment, um Josh Viala had sent along some proposed next steps in terms of um getting back in front of the board and kind of talking about, you know, a a a next kind of um public forum. Um let's not talk about that now, but um may- maybe maybe a little bit of time, um, you know, perhaps on the 9th. Um, just to kind of get that all squared away so we can get them booked um for for the next couple steps in the project.
Hey, does that sound good tip for everyone?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Great. Anything from anyone else this evening? If not, I just would like to say we don't know what's going to happen tomorrow, but it's been a pleasure to work with all of you. If if um if I'm here, I hope to be attending on the 9th, but you know, we never know these things and um just um it's been a wonderful experience and just thanks to all the residents who have um just really come out and and um been so supportive of this board, so.
Yeah, and Meredith, I just wanted to say thanks to you for um being chair. You know, you're you're very kind and generous and allowing the residents to speak. And I really appreciate that, um, you know, sometimes to a fault, but I think it's always good um to let the residents speak and you're always kind and graceful and inclusive, so thank you.
Thank you, Maggie.
Yeah, and uh Meredith, I'd like to say it's it's uh been a pleasure serving with you and it will be a pleasure to con- to continue to serve with you. Um, uh, should the residents decide that um that's their preference, so wish you the very best tomorrow.
Thank you.
Yeah, you've been a fantastic chair, Meredith. Thank you. I I love your demeanor. I love the way you um keep things rolling. And to Maggie's point, just allowing everyone to speak is so important and you um and you do that, and it's it's nice to see. And best of luck tomorrow. I have the utmost confidence you'll be in that chair next week.
So uh Meredith, having served with you for the three years of your term, you know, I can uh thank you for your public service. We all know what what it's like, and I know what it's like to chair, and you've done it for two years, so um, so thank you. I appreciate all of your uh contributions to the board.
Thank you all very much. Okay, with that, um, we I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second, okay, roll call. Uh, Cheryl?
Yes.
Jim?
Yes.
Maggie?
Yes.
Sean?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Good evening, all.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.